Morning, Nate.
Hey.
Some might put in.
Don't lose this, guys.
Really?
Because it has to be read out.
Say again?
When you get to the main purse, that separate sucker sheet, don't lose it. Whoever makes the motion has to read this out.
And this is for a detective session?
No, this is the main purse.
Oh.
The entire thing, right?
Yep.
No helicopter. God show. Where'd you see it?
Oh.
Down the sucker sheet?
That's true.
Oh, huh? Probably the mill dump. People seem to get huge. Somebody else said. Yeah, we've got a pond. It's not to see him, but not, um... You don't see any...
No, no, no.
I don't have my camera up and over it. I've got a big brooder over there to watch it for three years. I hopefully make another year. Deer moose. Yeah. We had a moose die at a pond.
Okay.
A couple of years ago. Hauled it out. The warden went over it, couldn't find a bullet hole in it. I said, "Do you think it had the brain worm?" He goes, "No, no." Worked it over and then... So it had nice rack. "You want the rack?" I said, "What do you think I brought the saws off for?" Well, we did. He had all kind of, uh, coagulated blood in the brain. It was ridiculous from fighting.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. Yeah. Ooh. Yeah, okay.
It's huge. Is that big that that far away?
It's on the mill, it's on the mill dump.
Inside dump or the outside dump? Inside?
He's huge. This is last year.
On the inside, inside the gate?
Yeah. They pitch up over the fence a little bit.
Oh, I know, I know. It just, there must not be any activity up there.
Right. Yeah. I think that's the one I saw the other day on Crasher. He's still... Crasher's like...
An elk.
Oh, yeah.
He's always a good sludge.
We're gonna get ten o'clock. All right. County Commissioners meeting on September sixteenth. Please join me in putting our flag.
For the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, everybody. Our recognition, do we have any recognition?
I have one.
Good.
So he's not here because he's retired, but I want to take a minute to thank, because I couldn't make his retirement lunch in Jim DeJardine. I've known Jim actually longer than I think I did because we were in class together. So I want to thank him for his service to this, this, uh, to us, as county commissioners, certainly in my last period of time. I was responsible to whatever needs we had, and I do appreciate him bringing to attention the bell tower because that belongs to us as commissioners' ultimate responsibility. I'd like him, thank him for doing so. But he'll be missed, but I know Richard is going to do a great job taking his place.
Okay. I agree. I think he was a great, great asset to the county. I appreciate it. I couldn't make it to his, I had a prior commitment that day as well, so regret that I couldn't make it to his retirement party, but he'll be missed.
Okay. No appointments? Uh, administrative report.
Gentle reminder to please review and make sure you sign the documents in the flower folder. We've had quite a few documents that haven't been signed by everyone, so just reminding everyone to do that, please. We've accepted Facilities Manager resignation as of September fourth. The Sheriff's Office has accepted the notice of resignation for Amanda Morgan effective October thirty-first. That position has been posted. We received numerous, uh, applications for that position. The commissioners have been invited to the ribbon cutting for the Rangelay Child Care Center on September twenty-seventh at 1:00 P.M. A copy of the invitation is in your flower folder. Please let know, Jamie, if you're planning to attend. The bell tower will be closed until the area can be cleaned and preservation measures have been installed to prevent pests from accessing the area. We will keep the public informed as to when and how long that will take and when the clock will be operable. We have reached out to Martin Pest Solutions to get a quote. We should have a quote by the end of the week. HR is currently recruiting corrections officers. We have three openings, dispatcher, one opening, and administrative assistant for the Sheriff's Office. The administrative offices of the commissioners has completed its mission and vision statement. A copy of it is in the clear packet. And there is an LUPC review and comment letter for a four-lot subdivision in Rangelay Plantation.
I move we accept the administrator's report.
I'll second it. I have a question, a couple of questions.
Moving seconded. Discussion.
So I appreciate you bringing up the bell tower. Thank you. I'm concerned that it took us, obviously, so long for it to be recognized. So one of the things that I had mentioned that it should be on the agenda in the future is how are we going to keep this from happening again? And I remember back in the day, and even today, if you go into some restrooms and other places in restaurants, there's a checklist still by the door. You know, did we do this, did we do this, did we do this? So since we're not in the courthouse anymore, this is not as easy for us perhaps to wander around and find. So that may be something we want to consider. But I think it's something that we should talk about at an agenda item in the future, and I appreciate, I've been looking forward to seeing the court and the schedule. So thank you. And the last one, thank you for the mission statement. Much appreciated.
Move the seconded, any more discussion? Move a favor? Okay. Minutes.
I move that we approve the minutes as presented.
Seconded.
Moving seconded, any more discussion? None? Move a favor? Thank you. Frisar's report. I think we won't have one today. Am I correct?
Right.
Okay. Mr. Brennan, the water battery presentation.
Yeah, I, I, colleague Lauren Walsh here is going to deliver that.
Okay.
But just by way of introduction, I'm Tom Brennan, working with the Western Main Energy Storage Project.
Would have been perfect. Yeah, can you come up? Stand up here.
Yep. Yeah. Um, Tom Brennan, Western Main Energy Storage. And my, my role in this project is, um, in, in public affairs. At this point in the project and at all points along the way, communication with the, the communities is critical. And so as our, as Lauren will describe, our FERC licensing permit or process just started very early in the process. But once you submit a preliminary application, it's a public document, so you've got to get out there and talk to people, which is why we're here.
FERC?
Oh, Federal Energy Regulatory Commission.
We all live in acronyms in the environmental world.
Yeah, sorry. Now I'm going to turn it over to Lauren.
Okay, Lauren.
All right, so Lauren Walsh, with Chimbor Corporation, I'm their corporate environmental manager. And my role in this project is spearheading the environmental permitting process, which includes FERC, also Maine DEP, Army Corps of Engineers, and all the associated agencies that, that roll up into that permitting process. So a little bit about this project. So it is, it's a pump storage project. I'll go into more detail about what that means. And our partners. So Chimbor, we are just a managing partner in this process. It will involve a lot of different groups. It'll also involve other entities as, as the project evolves. Feinschmidt is who we've been partnering with to look at the initial design as well as assistance in the, in the FERC permitting process. RLC is looking at the grid. So this project will connect to the, the grid, the CMP grid. Haley Eldridge Geotechnical, so looking at soils and the, and the geology of the site that we've chosen. Flycatcher is, um, working on our environmental studies. And there are, there are many of them, and we're just at the very beginning of this process. Consulting is looking at the, the energy storage, the revenue modeling. So in terms of, you know, the, how this will benefit both the grid as well as, as be an efficient project. And TOSU is, is Tom Brennan, and our, our outreach and public relations director. So all these companies do have, they're, they're based in Maine as well. All right, why is energy storage needed? So if, we are looking at aligning the energy output that is on the grid, the energy generation on the grid, and the demand. This here, the, this graphic shows, the, the black line shows the demand curve. So this is the energy that we use throughout the course of a day. So in the morning, you know, the demand is fairly low. People are just waking up, they're getting ready, they're going out to work. It peaks a little bit, you know, six, seven AM, as people are taking their showers, so the, the hot water heaters are running. Might bump up the heat a little bit to get warm in the morning. That demand goes down right around midday as everybody is, is out working and doing their everyday jobs. And then back again in the evening, it will peak again, so that demand will peak. Currently, our energy generation, especially with the influx of renewables on the grid, so the, the wind and the solar that we have, and also we do have some traditional style battery storage facilities that have been added to our grid. That noon time, that's, that's when the peak generation hits. So it's opposite of when our demand is actually occurring. So there is a, there's an excess of energy on the grid at that point in time. What a pump storage project will do is it will harness that, that excess energy, and I'll show you how it will do that. Similar to a traditional battery facility, it will harness that energy, store it, and allow for discharge to the grid during those demand periods. So pump storage is not a new technology, so it's, it's been around for decades, several decades. You know, within Maine, we're, we're very familiar with hydro facilities on river. This is different. This is completely off river, but it will still generate electricity in much the same manner. So these, um, stars across the country are all of the operating and proposed facilities, pump storage facilities across the country. Right now, there are twenty-four operating facilities across the country. Two of those are within New England. Those are the closest to us is, is Northfield and Bear Swamp. So in Northfield, Massachusetts, and the Row area of Massachusetts as well. Those are both very large facilities. So the Northfield is the largest at 1,068 megawatts, and Bear Swamp is roughly half that at 600. So how does the facility work? So it's essentially a water battery. So you have two reservoirs, an upper and a lower reservoir that you fill with water during the, when the, the energy is plentiful on the grid. You supply, you buy energy off of the grid, and you pump the water up to the upper reservoir. When energy is needed on the grid, you would then discharge that, that water down through a turbine, much the same as, as on a river hydro system, generating electricity back to the grid that is needed during that, that demand period of the day. So nighttime, when it's cold and we're running heat pumps or, you know, having other electrical appliances that are needed for our homes and our businesses, you can supply that additional energy. Just stop there. Any questions on that? Some of you, I know I've seen this presentation before, so...
I'm just curious, during the peak demand, who supplies that energy now? What's the source?
So, so that, that graphic, I want to go back to that real quick. So this graphic is, um, so the Department of Energy has a similar graphic. We have modified this one to fit Maine's and New England's, um, grid operation. So that, that energy, that peak orange time, that's supplied from the Maine grid or the New England grid from all of the inputs that are generating at that point in time. With the influx of, of solar right now, you do get more energy generation during the day.
So during the evening, when you need the energy, who supplies that now? Because solar doesn't supply it. So who, what's the source? Do you know that?
The, it's the traditional mix. So it, it would be all of the other generating facilities within the New England grid.
And where is Bear Swamp?
Bear Swamp is in Row. Row, Massachusetts.
Row, Massachusetts. Thank you. So what's the, probably can't tell, but, I mean, households, what, what's this represent that it could cover?
That, we don't have that data as of yet because we are not that far along in, in our, um, design of the facility. So we'll have that information as we, as we move further along in the design process as to how many houses, for example, may get...
Now, will this power stay in state?
It will be discharged to the grid. No.
Scott?
Hi, just a question. Talking about reservoirs, in the winter time, how does that work when all the ponds are frozen?
Sure. So similar to a hydro dam, you have the activity of the, the water moving will keep the...
Constantly going up and coming back down again?
Coming back down. Yep, so that area will, um...
So this is already in effect in some other cold weather states? Okay.
Um, yeah, Massachusetts Row and Bear Swamp and Northfield. So those two facilities have been in operation since the eighties, seventies. This is our location, so we are proposing this facility right now in Dixfield. There will be two reservoirs, the upper and lower reservoir. We chose this location for several factors. So we looked at, I don't even, you know, many, many sites across the state. Our shortlist was nine, and then we narrowed that down to this particular site. So when we were looking at those sites, we looked at the environmental impacts that would, would happen. We looked at the proximity to the transmission corridor because we do need to connect to the transmission corridors to the main grid. We looked at topography because we do need that, that drop in elevation in order to be able to generate the enough electricity through the... And this, this location had the least overall environmental impact, the best, um, drop in elevation between the two reservoir locations as well as we could utilize the natural topography of the area in terms of creating the reservoirs. So we also did not want to go blasting a large area in order to create a reservoir. We wanted to somewhat use the natural, the natural topography. So these two reservoirs, let me go back. Um, the two reservoirs, they're a hundred acres each, and the facility, the total acreage for the facility is right around 600 acres. That information is all available publicly on FERC's website, where they post all of their application information. We have just submitted what's called a preliminary permit application, which, once approved by FERC, allows us to further study this area, which we would then put together our design, our final design of both reservoirs, the interconnect to the grid. And I know there's probably lots of questions that you all have about the operation, which we just don't, we don't know right now. So we're very early on in understanding this location more and designing the facility. We would have, um, the initial fill would, would be from the Andersgårdin River, so that's part of what makes this, this process jurisdictional by FERC. Once the reservoirs are filled, that, um, intake system would be discontamed. We expect the fill to take roughly ten to twelve months. We have done initial watershed studies. Um, I think there was some questions early on, and we were just, just sitting here before the meeting about, um, you know, evaporation and, you know, how much it would take to fill. So eight to ten months from the river. That fill rate is less than one percent of what's called a seven to ten, which is the, the low flow period of the river. So right now, um, we'd be taking less than, than one percent of that, which, if you, you know, look at the historic use of the river and the mills on the river, it's, it's minuscule compared to what, what we have used historically from the river.
Question. After the initial fill, do you anticipate having to top it off? I mean, there's going to be evaporation and that sort of thing. Where does that come from? From the river?
So there will be evaporation. What we have, what our initial studies have, have indicated is that we can install a couple of just groundwater wells, and that should adequately take care of the evaporation. So we had a, um, a company look at the historic rainfall, the historic drought conditions, um, any snowfall rates, precipitation, overland flow that would contribute to offsetting that evaporation. And so we understand that it should not take too much water to make up that evaporation at that point in time. We'll be more, doing more studies, of course, to verify that.
One other question. So this is a closed loop?
Yes.
You use that water over and over again, it's going to get pretty nasty, isn't it?
That's a good question. So I think our, our studies, as we further go along, will help us to understand exactly what needs to happen. They are going to be a hundred acre reservoirs, so lakes and ponds transition frequently as well. And then, you know, usually the biology of those systems help to keep it naturally clean. Whether we're going to need some other type of system, I don't know.
When you, when you blast in there, is possibility of hitting water veins regularly? So is that...
Right. That's part of what this initial study period will, will help us determine what potential impacts there could be and how we can mitigate them. So we don't know the construction means and methods at this point in time. So as I mentioned before, we've had Flycatcher, who has been doing several on-the-ground studies in terms of the natural environmental resources that are part of the area. We've looked at wetlands, we've looked at streams, we've looked at the associated critters that, that live in those areas, silvoral pools. We've looked at, um... The upper reservoir will be located in a existing beaver compoundment area. We are studying the fish right now, if there are any fish. We've had no indication that there are fish in that upper pond at this point in time, but we'll do some further studies. The, we've had some of our other presentations, several folks have asked about maintaining the stream flows within there. So those brown and blue lines, the brown lines and blue lines are what we've identified as streams. The lower reservoir is within a stream area. At this point in time, we do plan to reroute. So we, we understand that, you know, we want to maintain that down, downstream water flow so we can maintain the, um, resources that are, are downstream from that. So likely, Splecher Brook is the name of that stream. We'd likely reroute it back into Luden. So Luden, Luden Brook is the, the stream, the brown line that is on to the right of that lower reservoir. So kind of following the Canton-Dixfield town line. The, um, brown line that seems to come out of the upper reservoir is what we've determined at this point in time looks to be a stream. So right now it is pretty much bone dry. There are some pockets of, of groundwater that we have identified along that stream, which do seem to probably feed it during, say, normal, normal conditions. We are in a drought right now. So that will all be further studied, but the intent would be to make sure that that also maintains its flow downstream so that we're not impacting anybody's water resources below those, those reservoirs of this facility. Any questions there? Go ahead.
So you, you get, this is 600 acres, so, and it's probably, is there a tax base that, that you're going to pay to the town on this? Or how is that?
So, you know, similar to other facilities, you know, it would be a, a structure, there would be a structure, there would be buildings. There will be a pump house. There's going to be a interconnect that comes from the existing... So from the existing CMP corridor, which is a, the white line kind of just above the river. So there will be, I'm standing up here. So right about from this area, so there will be a substation here. So that, that would be something else, you know, a facility that would be a tax base. And then the interconnect would go up towards the lower reservoir, where there would be a pump house, so another building that would house the equipment to operate. And then those structures. Along the CMP transmission line, so our initial studies related to the grid have indicated that we do not need to do any new transmission corridor. So aside from the line that's going to connect the facility to the grid, we do not believe there would be any need for a new, a new transmission corridor. So upgrade within that, that system, the existing corridor, yes, but no new transmission lines at this point in time.
And this property you have purchased already, or...
So we have agreements in place with the, the landowners. It is all private property.
And could I ask, where's your funding coming from? Is it public, private, a repairer, or what?
At this point in time, private. So, you know, we are just, we're in the early stages of organizing and starting development of this project. Additional funding from private developers, additional private developers. So as, um, as we mentioned in the beginning, we are very early in the stages of this process. So we have just basically finished up the, the first bucket there, twenty-three to twenty-five site identification, property assessment. We have a concept design, which you can read more about in the, the FERC application. Um, and then, you know, feasibility studies. So we've done the studies, RLC's done the studies with the grid to make sure that it's feasible for us to connect in this location. Right now, we're starting the environmental studies in, in depth. So there'll be more field work done over the next couple of years in terms of environmental studies as well as coordinating with all of the environmental groups and agencies and all of the procurement applications. So FERC is essentially going to be the lead agency. We will be having what's called scoping sessions under that process, which will be bringing together all of the different stakeholders from the environmental groups, historic preservation, tribal entities, recreational groups, municipalities. So all of them will come together in different scoping sessions to talk about how this project will impact each of those groups and what it means to them, benefits and, and how we're moving forward. We intend this to be an open communication process as much as we can. Uh, we do feel like it's a, it's a good project for Maine, it's beneficial. We recognize that there are lots of stakeholders, and that's why we're, we're out here talking to everybody. So again, just emphasizing it's a circular process. We've talked with lots of folks already, um, several environmental groups, recreational groups, and different municipalities as well. Part of our outreach is we want to make sure we don't miss anybody. So if, if you hear, when you're out talking to your people, somebody that has questions, you know, send them to Tom so that, that we can get those questions... you know, send them to Tom so that, that we can get those questions answered as quickly as possible. And then, these are just a few pictures of an operating facility. This particular facility is down in South Carolina, I believe. Couple of our engineers went down to take a look at it as, as part of our research. The, the picture all the way over to the right is that the upwelling is when water is, is put into the reservoir. So you see that, that agitation that would, in theory, help with freeze conditions. The picture all the way over to the left is, is kind of a view of the upper reservoir and then the lower reservoir, which in this case is, is an actual river. So many of these facilities across the country historically have been built with one, at least one of their reservoirs intercepting a actual river. So this facility will be different in that, in that case, that we are going to be completely off-river and closed loop. The other closed-loop facilities across the country are traditionally built in old mines. So they will have, you know, two, two areas of, of a mine that usually they end up intercepting groundwater at some point in time. So part of the, the reclamation and the, the beneficial reuse of those facilities would be determined at the, the comp storage. We do not expect to be beginning construction until right around 2029. We are hoping the permitting process moves faster, but it, right now, it appears to be a three to five year process. That's where we're at.
Question. How was the reception at the town of Dixfield? I mean, it's going to be a Dixfield proper, are they in favor or against, or...
We, we met with the, the land board there, and so far it's been positive for us.
I can answer that. So in full disclosure, I'm working with them as far as communication team, which I think I've told you before. But in Dixfield, one interesting aspect, Dick Pickett, Dick is the chairman of the Dixfield Board. He and I served in the legislature together. After the meeting, I reached out to say hi, good to see you, and he wrote back to me, says hi, thanks for coming, we're really excited about this project. So they were very positive. And, and all of the groups in the group have been very, very positive about this concept. And, and just as Lauren has asked your questions, you might be saying, why is she answering that? Well, unlike another project that might have been involved years ago, where promises were made upfront and never fulfilled, we're coming out to say, this is going on, we just want you to know about it. And they have questions, Tom's the head of the group, get in touch with him. But just letting you know, this is happening. And rather than have, you already read it about in the paper, but at least you have a conduit to get questions, answers as this time goes on. Something maybe one of them will be in Franklin County.
And we do have a website, so there's more information on this project, as well as links to Department of Energy and FERC's website for just more information on comp storage in general.
One of the issues with hydro, we all know, is environment. Fish passageways and fish ladders and, and things of that nature, which are all, you know, necessary things to have. This doesn't really apply. I mean, it, it's a whole system, so if there's any, if there are any fish in the upper reservoir, I guess we'd have to figure that out, but it, it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't bode the same way as a, as a river hydro.
Right. It's not, it, it would not be a, you know, a migration path.
Yeah, right, migration.
For any, any fish.
Any other questions? I just had...
Roger.
Why Maine? Why, why this area?
Because we have, we have the ability to put this type of facility in Maine. So we have the topography, we have the, the grid capacity, and it's needed. So the, there are two, the two facilities operating right now in Massachusetts that are supplementing the, the New England grid, they've been operating for, for decades. So why not? It has all the, the right ingredients.
Just one more question. What's the kind of cost?
We do not have that information at, at this point in time to estimate the cost. The, the FERC application, we had to throw a number in there.
Yeah.
A billion dollars is what's, what's in there right now.
Well, I didn't mean the cost of the project, but when you generate power, what's the cost of that power?
Oh, that information I do not have.
Okay.
So we have, we have folks that are, are working on that. There's been a, you know, an overall feasibility study done on the, the economic viability of the project, and it is, at this point in time, viable, but...
Good.
There is the FERC site, the application is public, and we can send a link to, to Amy to show where you can go look at it if you want more, as many details at least that have been put out right now.
And I just want to mention one, and I don't mean some negative, but Maine exports more energy than we import. In other words, Maine again is a place where we generate power and we, and it's distributed throughout New England, we generate more than we use. And here, we're going to be generating more electricity to be put into the grid that we don't particularly need in the state of Maine.
Yeah, so this, this facility is, is more or less a battery. So there are comp storage facilities that will generate and, and store. At this point in time, this is more or less storage. So it's not, it will, it will dump that electricity back to the grid at the time that we don't have all of that generation right now.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Coleman Security Grant.
Mr. Fowler. Thank you. I appreciate you just put on the agenda. About two months ago, I read an article in the Lewiston Sun that Lincoln County was concerned over a requirement that was in the FEMA grant to receive, to have some specific support for homeland security and immigration enforcement that they're undertaking. And they were worried about that. And I didn't really know anything about it. And so I, I, I've worked extensively, I guess, over the last six months with our emergency management team here, and they receive federal emergency management funds. And we often think about FEMA money as, when there's a disaster, in comes the money from FEMA. And so I thought that was rather odd, that it would be connected to this, and I didn't really know the history. So Amy put together some information, and I guess we have both the sheriff had some information as well, and hopefully EMA has some information as well. What, what struck me about this is that I then later read that the state of Maine has joined nineteen other states to oppose this, and they issued a lawsuit with the administration. And, and, and the idea behind it is the federal government cannot use the spending power to coerce states into adopting preferred policies. And so I asked for the wording in it so that I could get a better understanding of it. And then what are the implications of it? And so in that, in our packet, here's information about the wording of it. And, and it just struck me that why this activity would be aligned with FEMA, of emergency management, when, I, I could see it being aligned with Stone Garden money that the sheriff probably will speak about, because that is our, our relationship with Border Patrol. But there were things that struck me about the, the wording. I don't think we're going to be able to do anything about it here, but I do, do want us to be aware of it. You know, the wording that really bothered me is that, that we'll honor request for a participation in joint operations and sharing information. And that additionally, the recipient agency will require that the sub-receipients or contractors certify in the same manner, that they'll do that. So I know, my impression is we use our FEMA money, but I'm, I'm sure that Amanda can tell us better than that. Well, we actually contract with other fire departments and other people to do trainings and to do work in, in prevention. So I, I appreciate the opportunity to have a conversation, and for us, if there is an implication, to understand it. But that's my purpose, my reason for it.
Well, I, I appreciate your inquiry. As far as federal fundings and law enforcement, the only thing we really deal with is the Stone Garden funds, as you alluded to. And I'm going to let Lieutenant Radcliffe explain how that works and how we interact with those funds and how we conduct business utilizing those funds. And just keep in mind, we've been involved with Stone Garden since before my time. I started, what, back in 2013, January 2013 here. We were using Stone Garden then, and then prior to that, it was going on as well. So LT, would you just explain what Stone Garden, Stone Garden, please?
Sure. So just read out the, the mission statement out of Stone Garden for, for this. Says that the established strategic operation, Stone Garden, covering all of Franklin County, to enhance intelligence gathering and enforcement operations along the Hilton border areas and routes of ingress and egress to address known and unknown criminal activity through increased integration and coordination with partner agencies. The focus on, on the, our duty is basically to do the same thing we normally do. It's to go up and do traffic stops, it's to go up and talk to people, it's to go up and see what kind of criminal activity may be going, going, be, be at foot, specifically in the area of the border. And the, the criminal element that is identified in the operation ranges from human smuggling organizations to drug smuggling organizations, outlaw motorcycle gangs, and to individual undocumented non-citizens attempting to further illegal entry into the United States. So that's all stuff that is identified in the Stone Garden mission statement and, and what they're asking us to do. But primarily what, what our job is, is to do the same thing that we do. We go up, we do traffic stops, we go up, we talk to people, and, and if we happen, and we, and we do, we file a report every day with them, and we report the names of the people, whether they're US citizens or they're somebody else. The, and that's kind of the long and the short.
Mm-hmm. So... The big concern politically is, are we reaching out to ICE and conducting ICE, you know, whatever they do, searching people out? No, we don't do that. All right? The only time we, we, as a matter of fact, I don't think I've ever met an ICE officer in all the years I've been in law enforcement, and particularly up here. So we don't get involved with ICE at all. What we do do though is we work with Border Patrol. And if we happen to come across a vehicle somewhere and it's loaded with people and they have no identification, can't speak English, we, we will call Border Patrol, have them come to the scene, have them interview the folks, so we can get a basic identification of what they've been doing. So if we stop them for an activity, usually traffic activity or something like that, and we got to take some sort of action, but we can't take any action if we don't know who we're dealing with. And so that's the reason why we call Border Patrol. And the Border Patrol will come down and they'll conduct their own investigation, and if there's an issue there, when it comes to federal law, they take care of that. Other than that, we don't deal with federal law at all. So, about, right?
Yep. How much, how much money do we get a year from Stone Garden County? The last several years, it's been around a hundred thousand dollars a year. About two-thirds of that comes to the sheriff's office. The sheriff's office by, by organization is the recipient, with a primary recipient, but other police agencies from Maine Forest Service, to Maine Warden Service, Wilton Police Department, Farquhar Police Department, the, yep, the tribal Indian police from, from Penobscot, because they have tribal lands in northern Franklin County. So all of those organizations take a, a smaller portion of the funding, and they're all participating in the same thing. The wardens, the, the fishing game will go out and do snowmobile operations, they'll stop people on snowmobile trails, they'll use the funding for that, they'll go out and use the money. Basically, again, it's doing the exact same job we do every single day. And we just, with the exception of, at the end of the day, we submit a report to Border Patrol that says, these are the people we had contacted today.
Yep.
Thank you. The only other thing that I meant, the sheriff mentioned about calling Border Patrol, so they are experts in documents, foreign national documents, which is one of the things that we are not.
Yeah.
So again, if we have somebody that we can't identify that has committed a criminal activity, it's, it's difficult for us to identify them. So Border Patrol does come and help, help us with ensuring that the documents that are being presented are legitimate, valid for national markets.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion that we accept the provisions of the FEMA grant application.
I'll second that motion. The move and seconded that we accept the provisions of the FEMA grant application. Any more discussion?
Could I ask you a couple of questions?
Sure.
Amanda's in the room. Amanda, how much money do we get from FEMA that this was attached to?
Emergency management, fluctuates every year. It averages around, similar to theirs, a hundred thousand dollars. Some years it's a hundred and fifteen. It goes a little less depending on the allocations. But I just wanted to address, out of the sixteen counties, fifteen have applied for the Homeland Security Funds, and we are actually a sub-recipient of the state. So the state also signs onto the same terms and conditions. And all of that, the full application with the terms and condition goes out to all of the towns that I support, and if they apply for the grant, they're also agreeing to the same terms and conditions. So they are all aware of if they read it or not, but it was addressed, and I think everybody's kind of seen the conversations back and forth about that, so...
Thank you.
More discussion. Okay. Motion's been made, all in favor? General, is there a document we did sign?
No, we've already submitted the application, and if we get the funding, then you would... So this is one of those grants that we've never brought. It's kind of a standing grant. All the other grants that we apply for, we ask for permission to apply, and then we accept the funds through the commissioners. This one's been standing and going on for decades, so it's never been one of those ones that comes to you for approval, and then, so I guess the question is, it's a new board. If you'd like to, we can certainly do that every year, but it's not something that we've, we've ever done historically.
I guess since we're all new, is as we renew those grants, just maybe that one time, and then we're all aware of what the grant is, that would be the only thing I'd think of. I don't want it to come every time we do it, but if we renew it, the next time it comes up for renewal, if we have an awareness of what those are, it would be helpful to me as only one member.
So there is no actual application process where Franklin County submits for Stone Garden? Border Patrol, because we are a county that has international border, they automatically apply for that for us. And then again, as Amanda said, the financial recipient of the Stone Garden funds is the state of Maine, so they manage the finances of it, but the county, specifically the sheriff's office, is the recipient of the grant by the way that the grant is written. So I, so there's no, I, I don't know, there, there's no application process for us to fill out, so...
Let me, if I, if I may, I just, because we're just signing off on something in a document that allows you to take that money. I don't care about the rest, I just care that the document that we're signing that's going to allow you to take that money, whoever brings that into you, that we're aware of, that's all.
Sure. I just want to make sure that, because you're, you're inquiring about an application process. I want to be clear that there is no...
What I meant is, I just should have been clear. Whatever applica, whatever process we have to do that we approve this for the next renewal, that's all.
Okay.
And I think, and I think we accepted the provisions of the grant application, not necessarily signing the application.
Right.
We, we accept the conditions that whoever signs this thing, signs it, we agree to that.
That's all. Present? Okay. Maine, FERC's three C adoption teams. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion, and I've got, in order to make this correct, I will read it verbatim, because it's a contractual thing. And it is to see if Franklin County, the county, will vote... And I've got, in order to make this correct, I will read it verbatim, because it's a contractual thing. And it is to see if Franklin County, the county, will vote to change its main public employees retirement system main tiers plan for its eligible Teamsters Union dispatchers effective January 1, 2026, for future service only. And there are several subs to this. The county agrees to A, adopt Special Plan 3C for its Teamsters Union dispatchers who regularly work full-time and who are not seasonal or temporary for service rendered after December 31, 2025. Service approved by Teamsters Union dispatchers prior to January 1, 2026 remains under regular Plan AC. And B, continue to provide Special Plan 2C for corrections employees who regularly work full-time hours and who are not seasonal. And C, continue to provide Special Plan 3C to its law enforcement officers who regularly work full-time and who are not seasonal or temporary. And D, continue to provide regular Plan AC to all other employees who regularly work full-time and who are not seasonal or temporary. And to its elected slash appointed officials. And finally E, to authorize the commissioner chair to sign the amended agreement between the county, Franklin County, and the main public employees retirement system main tiers. Motion to approve as written, that's my motion.
Second.
Move and seconded. Anybody want to hear that again?
Can I have a question? I'm assuming this all comes about because of the recent ratification of our adoption of the union contract with the Teamsters? Does this have a cost and was that cost in the budget?
That's why we're not allowing them to take it until January 1st, because we do not have all of these funds in the budget. It was an ask that we did not see coming. So we asked them to wait six months until their contract to be eligible.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? Okay, all in favor? unanimous. Document preservation.
So through the budget process, we set aside some funds because every five years, the commissioners' agendas and subsequent minutes, as well as packets now, have been bound for preservation of its original documents. This is a pretty expensive proposition, and we had, we've reached out to get three quotes. And our recommendation is to go with CO File because it will bind them in a similar manner to the ones that we have currently. The less expensive option would be not a hardcover and it wouldn't protect the documents, the original documents. So we are, we're asking that you award the bid to CO File.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion we award the bid to CO File.
I'll second the motion.
Motion's been made, seconded, to award the bid to CO File for $14,225. Any more discussion? All in favor? Sheriff's Office copier.
Okay, so the current copier we have had, we've had from Transco, it's been there since I came on in 2013, it was brand new back then. Since then, it's slowly dying the death of a dusty doughnut, so. Time to refresh the copier in our office. And so I put a bid out to Transco, to a company called Budget Document, and also to Visual Edge. I don't know if they give you information in the packet there, but the Visual Edge came back with three different types of copiers. And what we're looking to do is to buy it outright, as opposed to doing the monthly leasing. We've been doing this leasing for 13 years, and it's ridiculous. Should have bought the thing twice over by now. So we're just gonna buy it outright. Anyway, it's going over the offers that were given to us. By the way, Transco never responded back by either email or phone calls, that left with them. So that left us with just two companies that did provide information to us. And going through these things, Budget Document seemed to offer the best deal with an outright purchase price of a Conica Minolta for $5,221.53. And then with a monthly $27.27 fee for maintenance, that sort of thing. So that's what we got. The only, the downside is that we did not have, I did not have that money in my copier fee, my copier line item, in my budget. And so what I asked Amy about was possibly taking this out of our capital equipment fund to replace the old one. And so I wanted to come before you four guys to say, first of all, get permission to get this thing, and second, to get permission to get this money out of our capital reserve, right?
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
I make a motion that we approve the recommendation of the sheriff.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to go with the sheriff's recommendation. Any more discussion?
I'm just curious, Jeff. Does this new copier have greater technology attached to it than?
Oh gosh, you're gonna ask me a technical question? It will do everything we needed to do in there, and hopefully just a little bit more. We really beat this machine to death. It gets a lot of use. Everybody in the office, 18 people, use it for a variety of reasons, between scans and copiers, and I know I kill a lot of trees with it. And so it's, it gets a lot of use. So from, we brought, these people came in, actually looked at what we're using, and they said, we can have an equal, if not better, machine. And so every one of these machines here, in their opinion, was equal, if not better, than what we're currently using. So I assume it's a better machine. I would not want to go backwards.
Mr. Chair? Yeah. A bit of a side note, but speaking of, I had a bail, what do you call it? Tell me that the printer, copier, whatever, that they deal with is junk here.
Which one is that?
The bail.
Oh, over to the jail, I mean?
Yeah. It brought this to mind when you were talking about this. Has that been addressed over there?
They have not come to me with any, they should. If there's an issue, then we need to address that as well. Because I'm sure that one's probably older than the one we have.
I was told, when I first got this office, I met a fellow at a social event, and first thing out of his mouth was, because he knew I was elected commissioner, we gotta do something about that printer at the, and I said, okay, we'll do it. So anyway, I just wanted to bring it up again.
Yeah, well, probably the next one.
There's an issue there, I don't know how severe or what it is.
So they've had three new printers over there in just the last, like, 90 days. So if you did still have an issue, I'd love to know which printer.
I haven't seen or heard from him.
Is it the big printer they're talking about?
So that break, the one they use over there is fairly new. I don't know, maybe they mean like the bail room one? That one's also, was just replaced within the last month, that one's new also.
He's one of the guys that does the bail, so.
So that one is brand new that's in there, so.
I guess we're good there, thank you.
Oh, you're talking about one of the bail commissioners complaining? Oh, I don't know what the issue was.
Yep.
I was thinking of the big copier they have over there, like ours. I didn't know if that was what you were speaking about, so.
Whatever they have to make, apparently it's been addressed, so thank you.
Sounds good.
So motion made, seconded, any more discussion? All in favor? Okay. Facilities manager and job description.
So with the recent turnover in this position, it was a good opportunity to review the job description and add, update, make any changes that were necessary before we go out and start advertising the filled position. So I've made some minor changes to the job description, which you have in your packet, and hopefully you're ready to approve that, so we can get the footing.
Question Tiffany, when I was reading through it, the boiler in the courthouse, it's its own animal. Does it need a boiler operator's license to run that?
How many PSI do you operate it at? What's the pressure of the boiler?
Don't know.
Well, that's what regulates.
Okay.
Both the main state boiler. I held a second engineer license for the last, other years. You're propping just 15 PSI, the answer's no.
Okay.
What did you say the number was again?
Fifteen PSI.
Fifty.
That's typical boiler.
What is it in a whole baseboard heating, what would that be typically?
Pure magic. That's not 10 PSI.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we accept the policy, I'm sorry, the job description.
I'll second the motion.
Motion's been made and seconded.
Mr. Chair? I would like to be on the interview committee when this gets ready. And then the second thing, I certainly hope that Brandon applies for the job. Thank you.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Did you have a question, Jeff?
No, I cannot see what the changes were.
Okay.
I'll follow up.
Sorry, we just begun. Okay. Hazard communication policy.
So as you're aware, back in July, we had a visitor from the Department of Labor Safety Works, and they went through and did an audit, looking at the courthouse space. And we came out with some action items. One of the action items was to have a communication, hazard communication plan, and also have a policy, which we had policy. However, when we developed the plan, because I could not locate one within the county, there were some changes that needed to be made to the policy. Minor changes such as who is in charge of, so it's a dual responsibility of HR and facilities to upkeep the hazard communication plan. And that really wasn't spelled out in the policy. So really, that was the main change in it. But I looked at both because, you know, they have to kind of speak to each other, right? The policy and the plan itself. So you have an updated policy in your packet for approval.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I have a general question, and perhaps in all the stuff I have going on this summer, I missed it. But did we get a copy of what they found, of their audit? I don't recall seeing one.
Yes.
We did?
Yeah, yeah, so there were eight action items, yeah.
Could you send, would you mind sending it to me again?
Sure.
Appreciate that, thank you. And do we have to approve, other than this, anything else that you put in there as a corrective action? As a, as a, or a?
Uh, no, so there are, everything except one has been addressed, and they're all mainly plans. So we have an exposure control plan, emergency evacuation plan, hazard communication plan. But this actually has a policy that goes with it, and you guys have the policy. So that's why I'm bringing it to you.
I apologize if I misplaced it.
Sure.
I make a motion we accept the approval of the hazard communication policy.
And I will second that.
Motion made and seconded, any more discussion? All in favor? Okay, we are on to old business. Emergency maintenance services, on-call mechanical services bids. So we...
You're in the flower folder, you need to open them.
Yep.
There's nothing in the.
No, it's in there.
Is it, is it to be opened?
Well, to be revealed or whatnot. We got them via email, so we didn't have them in envelopes.
So I don't know which ones they are.
Is this one?
That's your plumbing, that's your mechanical. But also mechanical, I mean, also with this one, they are also included with the plumbing. So they put quotes, which you'll see here. We can't use this one because we already voted last meeting for that.
Yep. Yep, can't use that one. So we're gonna start with the electrical services bid review. And that's one you have, Tom. Sorry, you got it. Cricket.
You know, in the legislature, we used to charge five bucks a bit.
Went into the coffee fund, the coffee fund is pretty rich.
I think we have three, right?
Yep. We got ES.
All right, so we have, we have two bids for the electrical. I think you opened them at the last one, and we wanted to go through them to see if, one was from IEC.
IEC.
And the other one was the Adrenalin Electric, and there's a PULOs.
There's a third one.
The third one was the EBS.
EBS.
Or ESB.
Yep.
Yes, you asked us to go to.
Value.
To the value, which is in your packet.
If I recall right, you said IEC seems because of their lower discount rate on.
The less of the markup, it's a catch-22. If you have a lot of work that needs to happen and you have a lot of hours, then you're gonna, it's gonna be a wash. I don't think you can go wrong with either company. They're both big enough to be able to, you know, take us on with some, without a whole lot of delay. So I don't think there is, between Adrenalin Electric and IEC, there would be, they're pretty competitive with one another. If we're buying big ticketed items, like a service that we just purchased, 30% is a lot of money, and you'd have to use a lot of time to come up with a difference.
And if I also, there's a third one too, the emergency response was cheaper for IEC than it was for Adrenalin? I believe it's like $20 cheaper. I don't, can't find it real quick. It seems that when you're chart, you had three things in there. You had hourly rate, markup, and emergency response, emergency call.
My understanding is that this is just for emergency services. If it was, if it was something over $10,000 and we knew what it was, we'd put it up to bid, correct?
No. The whole purpose of going out to bid for the hourly rates is that you don't have to do all of that anymore. So now you have a preferred vendor. You're doing this preferred vendor bid process. So now you would use your preferred vendor instead of having to go out to bid every single time.
Thank you.
You got, Jeff? So we really were down to Adrenalin and IEC.
Yes.
This is the general statement that.
Right, so you want to just go by hour?
Well, I think you gotta take all three things into consideration.
Right, well, I didn't know if you wanted to announce that.
There's a sheet in your packet. The chart is in your packet, I can't find it. Yeah. If you look at your packet, it was a, yeah.
Oh, that's right.
Looks like this, Tom.
Yeah, I saw it, so I went through it. So I said there were three things on it, there was emergency services, there was regular hourly rate if they had to come in, and then markup on the, on anything they had to buy.
So IEC was lowest than all of those three?
No, I think they were higher in the wages, in the hourly rate.
Yeah, hourly rate, they're higher, $20 more per hour. And then, I believe in emergency services, they are as well, because it's time and half.
Their hourly rate, I think on that chart was less.
No, IEC is higher, I think it's $85 an hour.
It says 58 on the chart.
No, it says lower on the chart, it says lower on the chart.
I think it's ES, E is $80 an hour.
Correct.
Chart shows it is lower. I can remember the number, so I don't remember, I don't have the chart.
The chart seems to indicate that IEC is lowest in all three categories.
Fifty-eight, 72, and 50% of the markup.
Correct.
I would make a motion then to adopt IEC.
Motion's been made, are you second?
Second.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, moved by Fen, seconded by Tom Schofield. Any more discussion? All in favor? Okay. Okay. On-call, general contractor bid review. As of this writing, this report, we've not received any proposals. But we had...
Mechanical. Mechanical.
Yeah, you have two. So, you have the home services, and you have Nason's.
Is it Franklin County Home Services?
Franklin County Home Services.
Okay, so Franklin County Home Services does the boiler. They're the only contractor we've been able to find local that will work on our boiler, and we've used them for years, so I'm glad they gave us at least a quote for the boiler. Is there anything in there for them to do, the heat pumps? Do they do heat pumps, or is it just boiler?
I think it was just the boiler.
So, I think you need two vendors for this.
But they also do electrical and plumbing.
Well... They do electrical and plumbing, so we took out the electrical portion of it.
I think IEC does heat pumps.
Yeah, IEC does not.
No. So, we definitely need you to make a motion to accept Franklin County Home Services for the boiler maintenance and, and any emergency services, because we don't have another vendor.
For the boiler.
For the boiler.
Make that motion, Mr. Chair.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. Any more discussion for the boiler? Okay, and that's Franklin County.
Home Services.
Home Services. Brandon Benjamin. Okay.
And most of all, need to find somebody for a heat box.
So, I believe there's another one, Nason's does does heat pump maintenance and...
Nason's, right.
That's the only one we have too, right? So, I make a motion to accept Nason's proposal.
All seconded.
Free pump.
Um, Nason has a rate on here for HVAC steam boiler as well. Standard labor rates.
So, I guess you would need to look at the price difference. I haven't, we didn't review them because it's supposed to be in here.
Franklin is still cheaper.
Okay, so I would use Nason's for the rest of our county's needs for the...
So, that would be HVAC, HVAC and steam pumps. Okay.
Moved and seconded.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor? Okay. Missing anything else? I know we have the, we have the web design before we get to that.
Yeah, we got plumbing. Do we have anything in there for plumbing?
Yes, we do. Under Franklin, home services, we have plumbing.
And then we had one before that, right? So, there should be two bids for plumbing.
Oh, okay. So, we have the page.
It's the page and Franklin Home Services.
Yep, so we've got Franklin. So, we're ninety dollars an hour for Franklin Home Services, we're... The other one, the page, is a hundred dollars an hour for master plumber, eighty-five for a journeyman, and sixty dollars for a helper. So... The overtime weekend rate. Oh, they both do, okay. And the overtime weekend rate seems to be, they broke it down. Want to take a look?
So, if I may, Mr. Chair, it seems to me if we have home services doing the boiler, we might as well just have them do the plumbing too.
That's exactly, exactly. That's exactly my view.
Appreciate the bids, but I think that's, let's just, one contract, yeah.
No, let's stop shopping.
I'll make that motion that we go with the Franklin.
Home Services.
Home Services.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any more discussion? Okay, we're done with all that.
We don't have a general contractor, just so you know. We work to trustful, we call people, we talk to people, but we don't...
Is that something, ma'am, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Is that something that perhaps the facility manager, we add into the skills list, have the ability to do some of that? Because you got them so they can do a little bit of construction, they get a little bit of this, a little bit of that. Is that something...
There's something in there about trades.
Trades, I think that covers it?
Yeah, I think it does, yeah. So, they may have some concrete skills or...
Enough to have a conversation with the vendors we brought on, or other vendors, for what we need to do.
Yeah, and something we can screen for too.
Yeah, internally.
Yeah, interviewing.
So, Mr. Chair, I think we've bypassed on that and see how the facility manager works.
Go back to it. Website bid review. We had, what, how many do we have altogether?
Thirty.
Seventy-three?
Four. No, right here.
Everybody wants to do your website, website design.
Eighty thousand dollars.
We had quite a spread. Lowest bid was a main base company at fifty-nine fifty. Highest bid was ninety-seven thousand dollars in the year. Thirty-five proposals.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
My man, I kinda looked at that numbers and it's bothering. So, my suggestion is to make a cutoff on what the price is gonna be. And then make it clear who the contractors are, because I can't tell who they are, where they're from, from that sheet. And then there's some really good general descriptions of what they do, but I'm sorry, I'm not technically capable of understanding. I'm sure migration means from this system to that system, but it would be nice to have a little definition of that. And I'm assuming Jake has been involved with all of this, is that correct?
I would hope so.
Some of it, yeah. We sent all the technical questions to Jake, of which he was like, these people are gonna, they're gonna want hundred, yeah, ninety thousand dollars.
Maybe if we narrow it down, and you all, three of you get together to kind of go through what these proposals are, and make a proposal to us, which is the best, because again, I can't tell where they're from. I can't sort out, other than migration, but the other stuff. So, what do they, one may say, I can do it for five grand, but it looks like that board over there says Franklin County, you know, and where someone else has got it, so it may be a little bit more, but it's a nice view that you have. I think the view we have is pretty decent personally.
Jake?
I don't know what the process would be, but I guess I would kind of like permission to, maybe proactively, we reach out to some of the local places in the area that we know would be much closer to what we're shooting for on a budget. I think just the way it was put out there, and I got hammered with emails from people with names I couldn't pronounce for weeks.
Weeks, and they're still...
And I'm still getting phone calls about this, so...
But it, what it, I'm sorry, go ahead, Tom.
Good thing. I'd had a conversation with Amy yesterday about this, and I was wondering if there were other county websites that we thought were ideal, or are there local town websites that we think are ideal? I really pitched what the town of Farmington did. If you go to their website, not only do you get a tremendous amount of information, but it's updated by, not the staff, but by the program people on a regular basis, and I just find that so informative. But when we were having this conversation, I thought, boy, we missed a piece, and that was, what is it we want it to look like? And then who we want, you know, who does it, who else has done it? And so, I would almost say, turn it back to staff and maybe do some research about local vendors, as well as local websites that we see and are impressed with.
Add to that, I would, also, I've gone on to a lot of them, and some of them are very good, some of them are terrible.
They were.
And ours is ending through. I can find stuff easily on some, and I gotta remember which ones I can't find it on others.
So, looks like the suggestion is to work with...
So, I think we got really hung up on this the last time. It'd be good if you guys came up with a motion. You gave us some guidance, so we know what you want us to do, because you told us to put it into a spreadsheet. And so, we did it in a spreadsheet. And now, like, we just wanna know what it is you're looking for, so that we can come back. If you need a recommendation, and we can, like, show you what that would look like, and do kind of a presentation. I don't have a problem doing that, but I think we'd wanna know what, what you're looking for.
Absolutely.
Something that pops.
Careful, careful.
So, I think Fen's idea is a good idea. Maybe we have homework, maybe we all have homework assignments. So, let's look at what's out there, and then I can better say, oh, I like this one, this kind of does something for me, and no, this one's terrible. Rather than have you guys figure out what that's gonna be, and show it to us, and we say, oh, that's nice, but this one's better. I think we have, we have a responsibility, anybody else out there that has an idea would be helpful to us. So, I'd take it on as a homework assignment to go look at some of the other towns.
I think anybody that wants to do that, but I still think we have to put it in to Jake and the administration to narrow this down to maybe the top five.
Alright, so here's, you wanna hear the good and the bad? We budgeted six thousand dollars. So, if we're going above and beyond six thousand dollars, then we gotta find another budgeting source to be able to pay for this. And then, I mean, maybe that's just way too low, you know, maybe we need to double it, triple it, whatever. Because if you look at some of these bids, that's what you're gonna need to do.
What was the highest bid this time, you remember?
Five thousand...
Fifty-nine, something until we had like one.
Yeah.
And again, with those, so maybe it's, I don't, I remember the, this one, the one at like a seven thousand, I think there's one at fifteen thousand.
Yeah.
So, maybe those, and I don't know if that range, so say it's a fifteen thousand down.
I think that the more you add on to it, and the more gadgets it has, the more bells and whistles it has, the more expensive it gets.
But if we do it so that those avenues are set, we may not add to it, but so that in the future, if we budget more than that, we can easily, not have them, instead of reprogram it, they already have that slot, just slip that stuff in. I mean, I give you the example, great example. You guys have done a wonderful job with the Google Drive. A lot of that stuff is public information, so to be able to get into that would be helpful, but we don't have a way to do that now. So, that's not something I want anybody to spend time on, but I wanna be able to, I think, would like to see a slot, that if some of that wants to go out there, we have a place to plug it in pretty easily. I don't know anything about webpages, so I'm just giving you an idea.
So, one of the things you may wanna look at is, if you were to take these vendors, most of the vendors at the bottom of the webpage, they sign that they created, it says created by.
Yeah.
You might be able to actually see some webpages that these folks have created.
They actually have them in proposals, but it's thirty-five of them. So, I think we need to, like, narrow it down to, hey, we're looking at these four or five, and then we may look at something more local. We had a bid process, so you can reject all these bids if you want, and that might be the step you need to take at this point, because I don't think that we should keep people on the hook for long periods of time over a bid process that just didn't, didn't work. It didn't work.
We can do our homework, I think, work with Jake, give us a small number, maybe five or less to choose from.
Wait, I'm sorry, I'm gonna...
I think you should make a motion to reject all the bids.
Okay.
And then we can start over.
Okay.
Make a motion to reject all bids.
All seconded. Motion has been made to reject all bids. Seconded. Any more discussion? All in favor? Okay, now we need a new motion.
I am, I'm trying to kinda say that, because I think Amy said it right, but I think we need a motion to have Jake and the administration group to look at other alternatives of what a webpage might look like for us. And that we too do our homework to do so, to provide that information back.
I'll second that motion.
That makes sense.
Can we have a general budget?
So, that we, so, I mean, I can look at somebody's webpage and be like, oh, this is it. This is, this is exactly what we're looking for, and then I talk to them, and they had it designed three years ago, and it cost thirty thousand dollars. Are we willing to pay thirty thousand dollars?
So, I would amend my motion to suggest at fifteen thousand dollars, but with the ability that we can grow that website into the future if we need to do that. So, if slots are, if you know, the slots are there to allow addition of material, rather than somebody saying, oh, I gotta redevelop the whole site because you did something. Does that help?
Get that, Jamie, get that motion?
Sure. Thank God for Mountain TV.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Any more discussion? All in favor? Alright. On-call exempt policy.
Okay, so, back in early summer, Commissioner Saviano brought this forward to you, and we had determined that we needed to have a legal review. The legal team had advised us to make some changes, but, you know, nothing that we were doing was completely illegal, but we did need to make some changes if we were gonna move forward. So, we did some work. Commissioner Saviano and Commissioner Gilbert met with me, and we went over, you know, all of the recommendations that came from the attorney. We've drafted something, and we're bringing it forward to you. My understanding is Commissioner Saviano would like to know what the boards, you know, what the board's looking to do. If we're looking forward, you know, to looking to move forward with these policies, we need to bring them back to legal. So, really, we're just trying to determine, you know, are we moving forward with these policies? And if so, we need to go to legal and make sure that they've been fine-tuned per the recommendation.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
And that's really, I wanna spend money if you guys don't wanna do this. I feel strongly about them. And I wanna thank Tiffany, because we sat down and met, and she pointed out some details, and I went home, trying, huh, heck, am I gonna figure that out? Next thing I know, there it was in my hands. So, thank you, appreciate that. And I want you to be recognized for that special effort. And this deals with both of those policies. He said, I'm ready to go forward with them, to send them to legal, get one more shot at them, just to make sure that we got it, but I think we did, and move forward.
Let's do them one at a time.
Yeah, so I just, again, I'm gonna say the same speech, I'll save it, save the time. So, I'd make a motion that we send this for legal review, and then have a discussion of implement it when it comes back.
I'll second the motion.
That's on-call exempt clause.
Motion's made and seconded. Discussion. We're getting discussion. I, I've read through this several times, and I'm concerned it's gonna add a huge amount of cost, and it's gonna be really hard to administer this program. And I say that because reading through it, it's gotta be approved, it's a lot of record-keeping. I think the people that we have, it can affect Jake, I think it affects Amanda, I think it affects maybe Bob Lightbody, maybe not.
No, but Brad, it would affect Brad, it would affect...
Sheriff's Office.
The sheriff's office, as well as Sarah, Sarah Caton at the DA's office, the HR director.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I would disagree with you. I think the way that Tiffany wrote it actually streamlines the process. And I don't think it's fair for us that our scott employees to come in for significant periods of time, sometimes in the case of an EMA situation, can be days without rerecognizing them for their efforts. So, that's why I put this into place, and I think it's appropriate that we send it off for review and pass it.
And I understand what you're saying, Tom, and I was here when Amanda worked all summer long with storms back-to-back, and she did all of her work, and I think we gave Amanda time to regroup. And I think we've done the same thing with Jake, you know, in a policy. If someone called Jake at seven-thirty, and he was on the phone with them for fifteen minutes, it's cheating. You know, and that could happen four days in a row, five days every, maybe it happens every day, Jake, I don't know. It's just, you know, we pay salary people for... It's just, you know, we pay salary people for their jobs and I think part of that salary position is, comes with it is, at least when I was a salary person, I wasn't, I was expected to work more than forty hours a week. And maybe we haven't defined that very well. But I just see this as, it's gonna be, it's gonna be expensive. It's gonna be expensive. It's gonna be expensive to administer and I think it's gonna be a cost to the county, so.
Again, I think the policy addressed the fifteen minutes and, again, we're taking people's times away from their families, which I think is, we should, they should be reimbursed for that time.
Ben?
Wasn't this all developed because we, either in union contract or in some other instance, gave certain employees on-call compensation?
So, for facilities, where we have facilities to be available on.
During the winter months.
Winter months.
And then we also have the transport officer getting on-call pay through the jail because sometimes they need to transfer an officer, an inmate to the hospital or to another facility for, uh, for housing.
Is your question?
Oh, yeah, I'm just, I'm curious because we saw that as a conflict that we weren't treating our employees fairly or equally.
But they're all hourly.
The ones that we gave them comp.
Yes.
Yeah, all the others.
The ones that we're charging to our.
Salaryed exempt employees.
So, Tom, when you brought this up, you had a perception that, a different perception about the responsibilities of salaried people?
I'm treating everybody equal. I don't treat hourly or salaried different, never have, never will. To me, it is, they're putting their time in away from their families and they need to be rewarded for that time, reimbursed for that time.
The one thing that it might do is make us more mindful about contacting exempt employees outside of normal business hours, right? Because what might be your emergency might not be a true emergency, so it might make us think about those things before we reach out. Can it wait till Monday? Can it wait till Friday? Whatever the case may be, so that we're not interfering and taking advantage of, you know, and not to say that we are, of an exempt employee's time off.
And that's a good point, thank you, because even though it was hourly at the mill when I went in and got, had to call somebody and I rarely went through a lot of thought because it was an automatic four-hour call in. So, I had to make a real decision before I said, do I really need them or can this wait till Monday?
I guess, my impression would be that if this was abused, it would come to our attention, I would hope, or Tiffany's attention. It would help us maybe reconsider, not reconsider the policy, but maybe consider the process that the policy is indoctrinated for. And it might help us even maybe take a look at the larger picture relative to, do we have a problem in this area because we keep it, we keep asking people to take one more time towards it, so.
Some jobs just come with that EMA. Prime example, you know, you're, go for years without any event, then you have a huge event like we did two years ago and this is in place, be off the charts, I mean, you know, it's just.
Keep in mind the policy has a timeline for when this has to be used by, so you can't accumulate time. There's a lot of things we put in there to address some of those questions.
There is a cap and if at the end of the year, one of the suggestions was to put a timeline on usage and so at the end of the year, if they haven't used it, it's a lose it situation. And we can do that in accordance with the law.
Okay, so, good.
Tiffany, we, we charge you with administering an HR policy in fairness. Are you strongly in support of this effort?
I'm kinda on both sides because there is administrative burden that comes with anything like this, right? Because then you have to have an approval process. So, I understand that side of things and that will flow either through Amy or myself as a deputy when somebody has an instance where they have to respond to an emergency situation. But the other side is making us more mindful of people's personal time. Maybe it's an email, sort of a call, you know what I mean? And maybe it's something that could wait and we oftentimes will reach out and it's not really an emergency. Maybe we just need to talk and are we having those situations, right? So, it'll cause us to be more mindful, like I had said. And it is nice in a way to recognize particularly, I will say Jake responds a lot. I mean, the other day he was here till eight o'clock at night. So, I think that it's important, it has some value to it to recognize those employees that do have to do that work outside of business hours. So, I'm kinda on, I'm a little on both sides, so that's where I am.
Mr. Chair, I think it's worth trying. In a formal life, I've dealt with the exact same thing and all the points that have been made here are valid. It does, the call-out isn't done capriciously, it's done with some urgency, it's emergency. It's not just, hey, I got a problem with my cellphone, I don't think, you, you, it's a real emergency. And the recipient of the call has a little responsibility also to say, hey, I, I'll answer the phone, but I gotta put this off till Monday. I think, I think it's worth trying and as Fen said, if we need to alter it going forward after we've experimented with it for a while, then maybe we can review it, but I think it's worth trying initially.
Okay. More discussion, Jeff?
Now, I work, by our salary, I went at six-thirty in the morning, got off four-thirty, it was fifty hours a week. But if I work my weekends where I was scheduled, I got comp, comp time. But we also have a budget for where we're at, you know, that's what, you know, was put forth to us, that's, this is the budget. So, I mean, it's, it's gonna cost us a lot more. There's a lot more, you know, trying to keep track of this stuff. If somebody's putting a lot of hours, I, you know, there should be some kind of compensation there somehow. How do we develop that? I mean, you, you could, you could add up to, I'm just gonna throw a figure, but let's say twenty, twenty days, depending on like somebody like Jake, he could, he could end up with twenty comp days per, you know. So, how do we, how do we watch that and how do we, you know, it's not in the budget, but now we're gonna put it in the budget and it's.
So, I, I wanna be clear, we're not paying people out.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, but the concern is, is that if we have employees that are gonna, we're gonna have some frequent flyers and they're, they are not, this is not frivolous, right? This is real stuff that's going on at the county and it's going to make us very mindful of the fact that IT is on-call quite a bit, is responding to calls from police departments that are outside of our jurisdiction. We can't say, hey, it's not our fault that you guys didn't remember your password and you're calling me at six AM because you need a new password. Like, these are gonna be beyond our control, right? We have in the past given, given time to exempt employees under extraordinary circumstances without a policy because we recognized that they were went above and beyond by responding to a flood, by having a hack, by, um, by having a system go down and they had to work the weekend and they weren't supposed to be working the weekend. We have done this with some flexibility in the past. I'm not saying that it, the concern is that if I can't afford to have Jake out an additional forty hours a week, who's gonna cover the county for those times because so-and-so officer forgot their password to be able to get into IMC or whatever we're calling it?
Pro suite.
Pro suite, this was, yeah, for years of IMCs. We're on to a new system, but that's the things that are happening that's causing those instances. And yeah, that might be a five or ten-minute occurrence, but it probably is happening four or five times a week and it's outside of eight-four. So, are we gonna say, okay, well, those four or five instances now are four hours? Okay, that's what, that what the board wants to do, that's, that's completely okay and that's, we'll do whatever you tell us to do. But I think that there are folks that are gonna get some time that they're never gonna be able to use because they, we can't afford them to be gone.
And, and, I mean, don't, don't get me wrong, I, I work salary, I mean, there, there's urine there and, uh, I mean, away from your family, I understand that, there should be compensation somehow because I mean, that's, that's up and beyond sometimes what goes on, but, uh, I mean, it's, it's hard to juggle both that stuff, you know.
So, I super appreciate what, what's trying to happen here, but for myself, I can't, I can, I have a hard time using the time that I have now. And if you're gonna give me comp time on top of that, and I'm probably one of the highest-called people for the Sheriff's Department for, for on-call, and I take calls almost every single day when I'm not working. Personally, I would rather see the county reevaluate what positions actually do and, and maybe build in a better pay scale to compensate people for, for what they actually do and include that compensation time in those pay scales rather than trying to do all the record keeping of paying somebody every time that they're, that they could get a phone call. I, I super appreciate it, I, I, I love the idea of trying to take care of employees.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. And but that's the thing that I get saddled with is that you're in such demand, now have some extra time off that you'll never take because you can't even take your own vacation. That's, that's what I used to get into years and years ago, so.
I just wanted, I just wanted to share that with you.
Mr. Chair, that, that's an individual thing, so, and I appreciate that. And I appreciate all the work that David does out there in the field. And that was also one of my suggestions back when we did the budget committee, but that didn't go anywhere. So, this is a way to at least recognize them and then if we address it in the budget in the future, we can do away with this policy because we've done it, we didn't do it. So, that's why it needs to be replaced, that's my personal opinion.
Ben?
I think adopting this policy would raise it, would raise our awareness about if, is our system working? Whether it's the lieutenant's position or whether it's Jake's position. If they have a lot of comp time and we're seeing it, we're probably saying to ourselves, how do we step back and look at the system as a whole and make some adjustments so that we can not run over budget and somehow maintain our current system with improvements? Otherwise, it's a personal problem. It's a personal problem for Jake. It's not an agency, it's not a company problem. I'm gonna support this for, I guess, for that reason. And if it doesn't work, let's come back to the table.
More discussion? Okay, so we're voting on a motion to submit the policy for true legal for review before implementation.
Yes.
Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Okay, inclement weather policy.
Same thing as before. Same story, yeah. This is, we sent it out for review the first time. Basically says that when the court, when the system recloses, a couple of people that don't get paid don't have to take their personal time, they will get paid for the same as schools canceled, let's say it that way.
And how does that, our current policy that we have now, refresh my memory, Tiffany?
So, currently, if we have an inclement weather event, employees have the option, non-essential employees have the option, to either take one of their paid days off, right, vacation sick, use some of their balance or they work from home remotely. So, either way, the employee is invested in that inclement weather event. Commissioner Saviano is bringing forward is different because everybody will be blanketed, right? We have an inclement weather, everybody gets paid day, they don't have to use anything, the county's not getting anything from them because everybody's off. So, that's the main differences between the two laws.
It's really just two people, is that correct or is it more than two people? It's just, uh, the people in probate are three people, just the people in probate that are full-time people like Sherry and then Jessica. I don't think it replaces anybody else, does it? I don't think so.
What do you mean?
I mean, they're, they're the only two that right now are required to take either a day off, you know.
They're not required to, they have, uh, different, their jobs are different and they have, um, how do you wanna word it?
So, what he's asking is, is all the hourly employees for, that are non-essential have to take their sick time or they have to work remote if they have an ability to do so.
Right.
They can choose to do either or. We don't dictate that they have to take their time or that they have to work.
Right.
But we do ask they use their banked time either sick or vacation if they have comp.
Yep.
I'm making confusion.
Yeah, there's nobody that's defined or stands out in that that says they have to do one or the other.
So, it seems to me when I put this together is that if we're closing the office, those people do not have to work. If we left the office open or they determine, I think we put this in the policy, that it's too inclement for them to come to work, then they fall back into this other category.
And who determines whether the office is open or not?
That would be me. So, the policy has the outline of how that's determined.
So, if the county administrator says, we got, we got forty-three inches of snow last night, we're gonna close county government today, and I'm a county employee, I can, under the current policy, I can't get to work. I don't really have anything at home to do because my job is at the county office. Again, under the current policy, I in all good faith would have to take a day off.
You take a sick day or a vacation day or a county.
But I'm not sick, so, so I'm not sick.
Yep.
I'd, I'd love to get there, but the place is closed and I don't have a functioning office at my home to work on what I routinely do. So, I'm in no man's land. I can't go to work. I'd love to go to work, but you've closed the office. I can't get to work. And with that situation, I think we should pay the employee. We, we determined, the county determined that you're not coming to work today, not the employee. And I think in that case, the county should pay the employee for staying home. You've told the employee to basically stay home today. Stay off the roads. We don't wanna add to the confusion in the traffic out there. We're closing the county. If the heat is not on at the building, we lose the heat, the electricity's off. There's nothing in this building that anybody can do, well, we've gotta generate. But let's say the heat goes off, the generator fails, this place is darker than a pocket. You're gonna send everybody home or tell them to not to come to work, but you're gonna take your vacation pay or your sick leave pay. I don't think that's right. We should pay them.
So, right now, under the current policy, the taxpayers are getting something out of this option because right now, if the staff can work remote, like some, a majority of us have done several times, we can still perform our duties and make phone calls, get on the computer and process things from home. We know an inclement weather's coming, event's coming and we're prepared, we're bringing our laptops home because we were all offered laptops. We offered everybody laptops so that they could have a setup at home for these particular situations. So, right now, I just wanna point out that we can still provide services from home, whereas if we do this, then we're closed closed, and we can't provide anything.
That's your choice, I mean, I always, it didn't matter when, international paper never closed, so.
Ben, district attorney staff, do they close in the same time that we do?
Only if the court's closed. So, if the court is closed, and sometimes the court closes and the state doesn't close and sometimes the state closes and the court doesn't close, they don't close simultaneously. Only if the court is closed will the DA's office be able to take the day. But we do have provisions in this that says they would get a comp day.
I used to get a kick out of it when I worked for the great state of Maine. If it snowed in Augusta, they closed state surfaces. We could get three feet of snow in Naples, Maine, on Sevega Lake, and we still We could get three feet of snow in Naples, Maine on Sevage Lake, and we still had to go to work. It was only based on Augusta. I think that's fixed over the years. They tend to look at more statewide, but we used to think, gee, it only snows in Augusta, I guess. It doesn't snow anywhere else.
I'll make a motion that we send this for review.
Okay. Motion made. Second? Do you want a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Second of my fan. Any more discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Okay. AG letters, legal review of budget process. Do you need?
So I had, I received a letter from the delegation. I emailed that out to you. It came to my attention that I have at least one commissioner that wants to know exactly what we're asking the AG. And may have additional questions associated with the original content of the question. So I think we're here to like bullet what you want this letter to look like, and then I believe you need to have a single sponsor and then co-sponsors for the letter or...
Ma'am, Mr. Chair, I can help individuals on the right track.
Good.
Am I the only one who asked for that? Because I misunderstood, I did not see the attachment because, and this is my mistake, but I reached out to Jamie to clarify it and I asked Commissioner Schofield, if I look at the minutes, I suggested that we go to Senator Black. So I kinda came out of there that that was my responsibility, my mistake. I did contact Russell and asked him if he would, see if the rest of the delegation that represents this area, as was all required by this, if they would reach out to the Attorney General. Unbeknownst to me, he reached out to the Attorney General without telling me. What I don't know, and I'm trying to clarify from him, is what did he provide? If you read the letter, he didn't provide him anything.
Yeah.
But then again, I think he did, and I reached out to him this morning to say, what did you give them? And he was in the doctor's office, so I haven't heard back. So to me, there's at least three documents that should go down to them if they have not submitted or if it's all public information. One is the initial letter, two is the first response, and the second is the third response. Those are the things that we're asking the Attorney General to look at. Those are what I think they should be. If you have other things that were provided in other meetings that I was not involved in, then you can provide those if you want.
The only other things that got provided to the attorney for the second letter was the minutes from the Budget Committee meeting and a link to their meetings that they voted on it so that they could get a full scope of how this process went down and how the votes occurred. So those are the only other things that the attorney received, and that was what we were planning to do, is get all that information and submit that to the person that sent us the original letter that I sent to you folks. But I don't want to do anything where you're not, I think you guys should make a motion on what you're sending to the AG.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we send them the three letters, and I think, let me step back. I'm gonna withdraw that. I think the motion should include going to Senator Black as the lead, which he's already taken lead by getting all those people to sign on. And that, and I'm not making a motion, I'm just suggesting that the three pieces of documentation that I suggested be provided, plus the links to the, rather than, the links to the Budget Committee meeting, and I don't care whether the documents on the Budget Committee notes or not, if that, how many, how big is that? How thick is that?
It's not very, it's just their minutes.
Okay.
So the minutes of the meeting are how they voted it out.
I think that the minutes of the meeting should be sent to Senator Black to distribute accordingly and ask for the Attorney General.
Is it a motion?
No, now, I had to suggest, I can't take a motion.
So, we're already way out of sync. Are you going to Russell? Russell already going, so we're, I don't want to say it, but we're already tainted. I'd like to back up and do this process the way it's supposed to because it's important. It's very important. And the fact that he, Russell Black went to the Attorney General with nothing to give him just makes us look a little foolish. I would, I think, I think we need to submit that documentation you just mentioned, Amy, all the notes, the link to the video and the minutes. And the rest of the delegation has been, we've reached out to them or Russell reached out to them?
Russell. Because your meeting, I don't know, I'm gonna interrupt you first.
Well, I just want to know that, who were the, who did he reach out to?
It's in the letter, so that he was sent. And keep in mind, that was at a public meeting that we made that recommendation.
Right, but I want to know.
Zoboleski, it was the gentleman that represents North Franklin County.
So Joe Martin.
Joe Martin, thank you. It was Lisa, Sheriff Sheila Lyman and Randy Paul and Steve Bunker. That was five. And, well.
From New Sharon.
Oh, New Sharon, correct. The ladies from New Sharon. Those are the six that were on there that he did, and I don't know, it's not clear to me that he submitted anything. I think he's writing the letter to us that he's willing to submit. That's what I don't know. So I don't know what he submitted to him. So I would just make the recommendation that we send to Senator Black since he's made the initial reach out, the three things, the three letters, and I would disagree that he tainted anything, we didn't take anything. The record's pretty clear. But bottom line is that you're gonna send them the three, through three letters. Original letter, the first response, the second response, a link to the meeting, video, and to the minutes themselves, we could contact. Those are the five, five pieces of information that should be provided because those of you that have served in the legislature know that you'll get the attention of leg, from legislators, not from county commissioners or town people. Would you agree, Commissioner?
Yes.
Okay, then let's make sure that, so we're...
Make an emotion. Make emotion.
But it's, this is important, is that it comes from one source, from the administrator's office, that nobody else is sending the information or asking, that it comes through, so we have a flow, a process.
So let me be clear, I didn't send him any information. Everything that we've talked about is public.
Right.
We reviewed the letter, we reviewed the two things that were in there. So I didn't provide Russell anything. He already had it.
He just went on his own, just...
No, I called him to say, but I didn't send him any information, so don't accuse me of something.
I'm not accusing you of anything.
He just said he didn't.
No, I didn't.
Okay. The bottom line is, I just reached out because I thought that was my task. And that's what I came out of this as. My mistake, I just called Jamie, I asked Jamie to, could you review that? So I, it's my mistake, but the bottom line, so I'm gonna make a motion. I'm gonna make a motion that we send to Senator Black on behalf of the commissioners, the three letters that we have, one letter was our original request, the two that we received from Council Libby, a link to the minutes of the Mount Blue video, and a copy of the minutes that were taken during that day.
So if we have somebody...
Gotta have a second.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Do you want a second? Do you want a second?
I'd second it, yeah.
Okay. Second of my fan. Go ahead, Jeff.
I just have a question about, so let's say if we pick Mike, we're, Mike...
Zoboleski?
Yeah. Is, I mean, how do we, does it matter now that...
So you...
Let me finish, let me finish.
Is it, does it matter who, if Russell hasn't sent it and we say, okay, you know, maybe, maybe we want Mike or maybe we want somebody else, now that this is in motion, does that, do we have to...
So your priority in the legislature is you always have a senator at the lead. You do not have representative at the lead. Senator calls a shot, Senator is the one you go to. And I will share with you what Russell told me, Zoboleski signed off on, it was the first one he heard back from. But you always, and again, disagree with me if you want, but always felt that, you always wanted a senator name out there prominently because there's thirty-five of them and a hundred and fifty one of the others.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor? When are our miscellaneous?
Who's the miscellaneous?
Please.
So we, as you guys have asked for, the COSAP updates that happened twice a month, the big update for this month is that we were successful in receiving a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to the Maine Recovery Council. It's basically four hundred thousand dollars that are slaughtered for Franklin County from the state's opioid funds. The state has two baskets of funds, or two buckets of funds, if you will. One is with the Maine Recovery Council and the other is with the Attorney General's office. We went before the Maine Recovery Council last week and we were able to secure a hundred and fifty thou, a hundred and twenty-five thousand of the four hundred thousand that was allocated for Franklin County that is specific to the medical assisted treatment program at the Franklin County Detention Center. So the, basically the long-acting injectables, the extended release burobin orphan, which is part of the COSAP program that we have implemented, we've now secured funding moving forward for a significant amount of time through, through that funding.
How, that's my question, how long will that take us, that one twenty-five?
Depends on how many people find themselves incarcerated at the Franklin County jail and also happen to have opiate use disorder. But if we look at the last couple of months, we have seen, you know, obviously when we implemented this program, it's very expensive to implement at first. We have multiple people that are on at the same time and they all have to be started at the same time. And then it's a question of how long it takes for them, to some of them to transition out. We have confirmed, by the way, for the people that are transitioning out now, which took a, we went live with this on July first, we gave our first injections on July seventeenth. As of last week, we're somewhere between nineteen and twenty-two injections that we provided, and the cost is anywhere between fifteen, fifty-three per shot and seventeen something per shot. So we've spent about thirty-eight thousand, and I just put another order in this morning for another fifteen thousand. So I would expect to see that probably consistent between seven and twelve thousand over the next, seven and twelve thousand dollars per month over the, over the next twelve months is what I would anticipate.
So the ones that you've done, injectables already, have any of them returned?
No.
Great answer.
It's a, it's a great answer, but I also want to be transparent with that answer. Most of the people that we have given that medication to have not been released yet.
Oh.
They're still in a pre-trial. We get very few sentenced people. This is a change that happened since COVID. We get very few sentenced people. Usually when people get sentenced now, they're sentenced to prison because their stay is longer than nine months. So that's one of those changes that happened on a state level nationally. It's happened nationally and jails, jail funding, jail policies, jail programming have not caught up to some of the things that have changed there, and neither has jail funding. So we have obviously been tasked, as you well know, for the last several years, or the last three years by the sheriff in finding any and all funding that we should be getting and are not getting. And we've, we've also addressed that last week as well, and the county administrator and I have been working on that. And we should, at the next commissioner's meeting, have some updates on that for you as well. But we have, this has been almost a second full-time job, finding these funds and getting them where they belong in our county instead of trying to double tax our, our county residents and taxpayers with things that they're already paying for and should already be allocated through state processes. So this is a huge help to us and we're very happy with it. We don't need a motion or a vote from, as I'm told by the county administrator, I'm not a legal expert on the county budget. This, the money itself is not a grant. It's coming through part of a grant process, but we don't have a reporting requirement. Other than the Maine Recovery Council would like to see us again in six, twelve months and let them know how things are going. There is no doubt that what we are doing here is being watched by the rest of the state, and a lot of people are reaching out to us asking how we're doing this. And in about six weeks, I think there's four of us that are actually headed down to Washington, DC to present at the American Public Health Association Conference about the transition that we've made here and what it's doing. For the people that have left, I am well aware that one of those people, two of those people now have actually transitioned and stayed on the long-acting injectable, which if I were to take something very, very complex...
Yeah, I know.
And make it into a very, very simple, very, very simple, you can't really get high. So if you take the, something that people know a lot more about, like alcohol and some of the long-acting injectables with people who are suffering from AUD or alcohol use disorder, you can't get drunk. If you can't get drunk, why would you drink? People that are on those shots, they're, the percentage of them that are getting reincarnated is incredibly low for the obvious reasons of they're not drinking because why would they? Very similar, very similar research, very similar data that we'll hopefully be able to show you, our data here in the next six to nine months.
So Ryan, with this comes tremendous amount of, you've been audited, there's a lot of paperwork. Are you working with Brenda? Are we keeping all the balls in the air?
Yeah, so the, two things on that. One is, you know, one of the other grants that we did get that you, that you all accepted was, was basically a fifty thousand dollar Department of Public Safety grant, which is what we bought the first several batches of injections from. That, the, the reporting process, I do, but the billing process, Brenda does under the commissioner's office. So our ability to get reimbursed after the money that we spend and the time, so not just the time to get the reimbursement, but how long it takes to get reimbursed is specifically on Brenda. We're getting that money back in a very short amount of time. Secondly, we have some communication from the county administrator about applying or not applying, but doing the drawdown for the COSAP grant, which is also another grant. Obviously, that grant's at a million dollars. These are incredibly complicated things. If we screw something up, it could cost us up to a million dollars. This is, it is very serious, and we spend a lot of time going back and forth, double-checking each other's work and making sure it's done right. Because if it's not, we're gonna be in front of you trying to explain why we're on the hook for up to a million dollars. And I don't, I don't want to do that. That does not sound like fun.
I don't want to either.
So to answer your question, yes.
Okay. No, I just, I know...
It's an intricate, it's an intricate part of this, and these are skills that when I became a police officer, I didn't know I was gonna need to learn. And I don't have them anywhere near at the rate that some of the people at the commissioner's office do, so.
I just, you and I have talked about it, and I know you had some auditors here and we're, I'm just looking at bits and pieces, and I know you've got a...
Yeah, not a fun process to be audited. I've never been audited, that was the first time. I've heard it's not fun with the IRS either, but having experienced that personally, not fun, but very lucky that we do things the right way and we learn a lot in that process. It's why we haven't done the drawdown this quarter yet because we are continuing to check. And she, Amy sent me an email with some questions that, one of them I didn't know the answer to, so I reached out to our tech support people to get that answer, and we're hopefully gonna do that drawdown later this week or next week. But that drawdown's what, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars? That right now the county's out, that is paying for three personnel positions, software, hardware, and construction. And so that, that's a lot of money. And again, we screw that up, we don't dot an I, we don't cross a T, we're in a lot of trouble, we're on the hook for it.
Well, you've done a great job. Keep doing a great job.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. Anybody else have any questions for Ryan? I'm sorry.
Thank you, Ryan. That's very encouraging. Thank you.
Okay. Under miscellaneous, I've got one thing tasked a while ago to talk about steel over in Salem to negotiate with the contractor, and we negotiated, still negotiating, went from ten thousand dollars, I went to sixty thousand dollars, and he's come back at thirty-eight. And this is for a complete bridge. I mean, this is the panels, everything. Talk with Light Body, he's been running interference as well, and I guess we need to figure out if we want to settle at that thirty-eight or if we... When he took the bridge out, he was supposed to bring it to Madrid, but we couldn't bring it to the pit in Madrid because the other bridge was out. The bridge is open now, so we could either accept thirty-eight thousand or we could say bring it over to the pit in Madrid and then try to... get more money for it. It's balls in the air. Bob, do you want to add to that at all?
I, I'm certainly, I don't have a strong recommendation one way or the other. Take the money and run? Or, you know, there's certainly lots of opportunity to use the bridge in the future. It's a, it's a good, good bridge and it would serve a lot of temporary purposes for sure. I don't know what the value of holding on to it for how long, you know, what value, value there is to the county. And that, that's sort of where I'm up in the air. I, I think it's worth more than thirty-eight thousand dollars for sure. Is it worth it for us to sit on it for three years, five years? That part I don't, I don't know. I can't imagine it would increase in value over time, but for emergency purposes, you know, who knows? But, you know, the goal during emergencies isn't really to take advantage of people either with higher prices. So.
We, we have a temporary, temporary bridge already that's in the pit in Madrid. It was over the, the orbit. And so that, so we already have one. So, this would be a second one. And, and the, the cost of this would come right off the bridge in Salem. There would be a credit on the bill. So, I don't think any money would change hands, so.
I guess the first thing that jumps to my mind, among other things, is how much need is there for two temporary bridges? Does the temporary bridge that you mentioned just now suffice for any, any possible bridge that we might lose in the interim rather than this one? And do we need to have two temporary bridges? And how often do we utilize temporary bridges? I know it's, it's, it's a, it's a matter of emergency, but is this something, like you say, three to four, five years from now, we might, we may have the need for a bridge? Would we have the need for two at the same time, do you think?
Hopefully not.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, to that point, I think the bridge that we took out over, over the stream, which is the one that, I'm sorry, excuse me. Quickstream.
Quickstream.
Which was the one Commissioner Carlton's speaking of at the moment. I feel like that's a little bit, that should span any other bridges we haven't replaced at this point. So, I believe that one's big enough. And I believe that one will be the most complete, easy-to-assemble package for emergency purposes. So, to that end, I, doesn't seem like there would be a need for two temporary bridges. I don't, I don't foresee that. I certainly hold on. In which case, maybe we look at one versus the other. I would say the, the Overton Stream temporary bridge is way bigger than any other temporary bridge we would need for any even, even rapid stream replacement at that point. So, no, it was a short edge. I don't believe we need two, two temporary bridges.
So, it's a decision as to which one should we dispose of?
Question, the thirty-eight thousand, does that get credit to the UT account?
Yes.
Yes.
It does. So, that, that's UT money that at the end of the day, does the state own that money?
No.
But we, we're running the UT budget.
Right.
So, that's a UT budget asset, which is administered by the state of Maine by the ag committee.
No, we, we develop a budget and send it to them. And they compile all of the UT budgets together and then they send it to the legislature under a bill package.
Okay.
And then they add on whatever your county taxes, because they're paying county taxes as well. And then they use that to compile mill rate for each of the counties, right, based on their value for the UT.
So, I, I follow you. I, I recall on this one legislature, but so there's, though theoretically, this thirty-eight thousand can be used to defray any tax increase we put into the-
Nope, I think it'd defray the cost of the bridge.
Yeah, it's going to defray the cost of the bridge. Yeah.
Apply right to that, that structure. So, Finn, go ahead.
My impression is we've used up almost all our reserve.
Everything. Every penny. Two bridges, two point four million dollars in three months, it's all gone. Well, as soon as they send us invoice.
So, this thirty-eight thousand dollar savings would be in reserve?
No. Well, yeah, yeah.
Technically, it would reduce the price of that bridge.
So, I, it would depend on how we did it because we have some of the money budgeted for in the budget. So, one of the bridges is budgeted for in the budget and the other is coming out of the reserve. So, it would, you know, at, at the end of the day, if there was money left over in the bridges line of the UT budget, would you preserve, hold over to the reserve through a vote of the commissioners?
I didn't make a motion that we sell the bridge for thirty-eight thousand dollars. I'll second that.
How much did you make in second? Jeff, go ahead.
So, how, how much to move that bridge, if we were to save, is that, there must be a cost?
Well, there's a cost. That's included in the contract cost. That's, we've already paid.
We've already.
For the, the rapid stream bridge that we're selling for eighty, excuse, thirty-eight thousand.
Quickstream.
Quickstream.
Quickstream, excuse me. I apologize. Quickstream Bridge. That one in the contract is, they owe us to move it to Madrid. If we, if we keep it. So, there's no, no additional cost to us to move it right now to Madrid where they, they owe it to us to get it there. If we sell it at thirty-eight thousand dollars, they take the bridge. They own it right where it is now. They own it on their own.
Do we get a re, do we have money coming back from the transportation that in the, like, in the, the original? You know, I, you must have the deal.
Only in the form of the credit that we get back for the cost of the bridge.
But you know what I mean?
Yeah, I do know what you mean.
Because they had to remove the bridge and bring it somewhere, and that cost them money. So, they're charging us to remove the bridge and bring it somewhere.
Right, but if you're selling it right there, there should be-
It's already gone.
Yeah. Oh.
Yeah, we moved it off the site. They moved it two miles down the road.
Where, where they moved it now, where it's stored now, is they chose to move it there. They could have taken it.
Yeah. So, that's just the cost of the contract to move the, remove the bridge and remove its components to wherever they were going to bring it. That, that was a part of the contract.
So, we, if I can follow up, is where, we didn't determine, tell them where to bring it. He just had it moved.
We told them that we wanted it at the Madrid pit.
Okay, and it's not at the Madrid pit?
No, because it couldn't get there.
Okay, I got you. Sorry. I'm, I'm following Peter's, but Jeff said, sorry. You look like Peter Bernard. I'm sorry.
Peter Paul Bernard.
Is that, there was amount of money to move the bridge to the Madrid pit. He's not in the Madrid pit because he couldn't get there because the other bridge was out. So, he moved it just so he could do the work. Now, if we said, no, we're not going to take thirty-eight thousand, he has an obligation to move that to the Madrid pit.
That's right.
And so, there is a cost involved. So, that cost should be credited to us too. So, there should be a thirty-eight thousand dollars plus whatever. So, say it was a hundred dollars to deliver it to the Madrid pit, and he delivered it ten percent of the way, so he only spent ten dollars. He has now a responsibility of ninety dollars that will be credited to us. So, it'd be an additive to the thirty-eight thousand. Does that make sense? Isn't that what you were asking, Jeff?
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm just, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, if he's got ten, I'm, I'm going to throw a figure out there. Say five thousand dollars to move that bridge, and he only moved it a hundred, you know, wherever it's down the road. There should be a credit of four grand. So, now you've got forty-two thousand.
We, basically, I went back to him and said forty grand, and he said thirty-eight, so.
It's pretty close.
I thought you said you said sixty.
We did say that.
And he started at ten.
And he started at ten, so.
So, now you've got somewhere in the middle. I think you're good.
On the right end of things.
I think you're good.
So, a motion's been made and seconded to sell it at thirty-eight thousand to Jordan Excavation. Is that correct?
Yes.
Any more discussion?
How do you feel about that?
In a perfect world, I'd like to haul it to Madrid, have a big auction. But we've been talking about that for two years because we've got other steel up there that we're going to talk about in a second after this one. And it's just sitting there and we, we could use it to offset some costs, so. I don't, you know, our temporary bridge that we bought to go over the orbit in, you know, it was a hundred thousand dollars installed. So, that's, that's brand-new steel. It's up on blocks. It's, it's, they can be bolted together, and I think that's a smart, you know, we shouldn't sell that. We should keep that for a period of time because, because we own it. There's the old steel that came out of the orbit and stream bridge that we need to, and then there's three other pieces. But I'm, I'm, I'm tired of dealing with it, Finn.
And I also think that, you know, we were, we're right down to the, right down to the nickel and dime about paying for this thing. And this will take the curse off that to some extent.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, you want to call us?
Yes.
Okay, tell them it's going to be a credit. Just along lines of this, I know, we did that horse on steel, but there's three pieces of steel that were in the Madrid pit that have trees going up through them, been there forever. And in our discovery, we said, oh, we need to drag this down, and it's, it's what, sixty feet long, Bob?
Sixty-three.
Sixty-three feet long. It's big steel, big web. The North Franklin Snowmobile Club lost a bridge in Madrid, and they were looking for steel to rebuild that bridge. And they've been bugging Bob, and they've been bugging me, and I just said, you know, bring it to the commissioners. And they gave us a price of six thousand dollars, and that was like the scrap price times three, and I think now it's, it was, it was six thousand dollars. And I'm thinking, huh, huh, huh. I, I just said, I threw a number out at nine thousand dollars, at, at three thousand dollars V for sixty feet, sixty-three feet long. We helped Snowmobile Club. The state's going to pay for it, so if we get the money out of the state. But I would, I would like to make a motion that we offer that to the North Franklin Snowmobile Club at nine thousand. Well, they move it. They, we don't. It's where it is, so.
As is where is.
As is where is. Yes, exactly.
So, they give them a time limit to get rid of it?
They want it now. They're building this, they're building the abutments now, so, you know, we help them with Snowmobile Club, but I thought the six thousand was a little cheap, so I'd like to say make a motion at nine thousand dollars. I'd say move.
Second.
All in favor? Yeah.
So, both of our bridges are done. We got a surprise final inspection on the Quickstream Bridge, and thankfully, Bob was able to attend. But he has a couple of other things he'd like to review with you over the UT roads.
Okay, so, yes, yesterday I had the opportunity to do the final inspection for the Quickstream Bridge in Salem. Everything went really well there, and that project's gone really well, as I've said all along the way. It has been a little slow for the fact that they're waiting for some concrete, some precast materials to come. It was just, no fault of the contractors is scheduling availability of material that was slow to arrive. So, overall, project went really well, and it's, everything's stabilized. The lawns are looking good. They're growing. Erosion control's out, so that all looks pretty good. The inspection went well. The only items of note were small things like grouting, some holes, like where there are lifting lugs. Maybe for some little bit of concrete nubs and things have to be knocked down. Really purely cosmetic things, a little bit of cleaning to do underneath the bridge. I would say nothing of substance, so very good. All work that Jordan intends to complete by the end of this week. And that's very doable. So, to Amy's comment, you know, and, and this was a problem we identified early on with the engineer. The, the communication consistently, again, throughout the summer was great, or was not great, or, or nonexistent at times. It seemed like this is Wentworth Associates. So, they were consistent with that communication piece throughout. And I, I brought that up to Steve Givoni yesterday, and it didn't make any difference. And I mention that more as we think about projects in the future, who we use, those types of things. Because that communication piece, as you guys all know, is very important, and we didn't have that. So, fortunately, I was able to get out there and Les Jordan informed me of that, so that was good. The next bridge, Overton Stream Bridge, I did not make the inspection last Tuesday, the final inspection. I believe Bob and Amy were there. I, I have not heard any notes or, excuse me, punchless items of concern, outstanding items. They're out of there for this year, for the fall, and the bridge is open, completed. Do you, are you aware of any fall cleanup items?
No, no, we, they've got the grouting done as well.
And they're, they're doing a field modification sketch that we're asking for, and we're going to record the registry of details. So that we have a perpetual document of the bridge. We're really historically been very bad at keeping these things in a centralized location. So, I figured if we recorded the plans, that at least anybody could look at them, and we would know where they are. So, that's the plan to, for the field modification plans.
Have I walked it over to the bridge?
No, I haven't yet.
It's amazing. It looks great.
Yeah, it looks good. And they did a really good job. They clearly do this stuff a lot, and they're real efficient and clean site, and it was good. It was a pleasure to have those guys, to see them put that together.
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to say, I, I, I'm not trying to puff you up anything, but you've done a great job this summer with those two projects and along with everything else. And I just want to recognize that, I want you to recognize that. I feel that we're, we're fortunate to have you on board, and I appreciate all your efforts.
Thank you very much. I, I appreciate that. It's sometimes hard to tell one year. You know, I spend a lot of time by myself out there. And meeting with constituents, a lot of times, it's, you know, hearing the problems, right? And so, it's good to know that there's some prog, recognizable progress being made. It's my pleasure because that's what you guys have hired me to do, and I'm grateful for the opportunity, so thank you.
That's refreshing.
Wow, thank you.
So, I do have a question. Did you get the sign fixed for Reed's Mill Road so that it pointed the right way?
Yeah, that, 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 for some reason, that project was chasing signs throughout the summer. There was just a couple of, you know, in the signs, the, from the, the sign plan from the engineers wasn't great, but they put them up the way they were shown to. It just took some identification and field to fix it. No big deal. And they were very good to, took care of that stuff right away, so that was good. Right now, we have ongoing construction, excuse me, maintenance work on Center Road in Madrid, and it's ditching. It's contract work from last year. They're just getting to that work. They've probably been out there for about two weeks now, ditching Center Road. And they'll be dropping back once the ditching's finished. I would say the ditching should be done this week, and they'll go jump into the culvert replacements. I can't remember off the top of my head how many culverts there are. It's six or nine, something like that, and they have to be replaced. And that all looks really good. I spent a lot of time with Fenwick's doing that work on West Freeman Road this summer. Kind of telling them the expectations I have for the ditching, the county's expectations. And they heard that, and they were able to learn from that and move forward. So, I'm encouraged with that work. Another item I'm going to follow up on this week is I'm going to reach out to CCC. They're the low bid contractor for the rickwrap work on Sandy River that we've been dealing with. And if you recall, they were low bidder by about a hundred twenty thousand dollars. So, very concerned about their costs. So, I'm going to reach out to them, see if we can get some project recommendations, or some people I can call about recent work, and then have a discussion with them about making sure everything adds up, so we're getting what we need out of this project. And finally, Center, excuse me, Byron Road, number six township.
The big hole?
It, you know, it, in, in recognizing how great I'm doing my job, I, I, I know that there's some concerns with that road. If, all things being equal, if I'm doing my job, that is the road that I am the most concerned about and needs the most attention, hands down, without a doubt. So, you know, that kind of, I, I guess I'd like some guidance or some input as to how we'd like to handle that. Because if I'm going to recommend doing it, I think there's, you know, probably, that, the only section that's paved there is about a hundred yards long. That really needs to be ripped up and repaved, rebased, whole thing, full construction. I don't know if that's what the county's looking to do, so I want to try to make some, you know, recommendations or get some guidance on what- I don't know if that's what the county's looking to do, so I wanna try to make some, you know, recommendations or get some guidance on what, what might be appropriate for that, if, how we'd like to move forward on that section.
Bob, I think, um, the best way to do that is come up with a plan, like a prospectus, and we're gonna go to Parks and Lands, because they had an agreement with us, and they were gonna help with the grading, and they dropped us like a hot potato, so, um, and again, State of Maine is the.
Virtually the only.
The only user on that road, so we're gonna continue to fight this battle, um, with them, but I, you know, God forbid that one of those bridges ever blew out, because I don't, I, I really don't know if we would have it in, in the best interest of Franklin County to replace a bridge, just to keep the state, uh, the hiking trail at Tumble Down open.
So, my understanding is you have a piece of road that's welled, the piece of road that's Byron.
Number, number six.
Number six.
Is in between those two.
Two and a half miles of county road.
Two and a half miles of county road. And in that time, in that two and a half miles, do we have any bridges?
Um, I think so.
I think we have a small one, yeah.
Near the Brook Trail.
Yeah, I believe that's correct.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
So, I, I think in putting this together is, what are our alternatives? And let me give you, one is Tobin, we're, we're not doing anymore, thank you very much, State, but we're not touching it, we, we voted as county commissioners, so when you have this conversation with Parks and Recs, you're kinda saying, this is one of our options. So, you can decide, because if you don't help us, we're not gonna go there.
I think that's a conversation we'll have with Parks and Lands.
I agree, I just would just, it would be good for the, us to, as a board, ultimately vote on those things, so Bob has a conversation that our board's.
I think it's an option, and we actually, we actually presented that option before, and, um, boy, you wanna talk about getting phone calls and emails and calls and everything, but.
Be prepared.
Be prepared, because, um, the, the people that bitch about their taxes the most are the ones that speak the loudest that you have to maintain that road.
There were seventy thousand hikers on Tumble Down this summer.
The last session of the legislature, I'm told that the bill that we had submitted on our behalf passed the legislature, but got held up in appropriations.
It's a carryover until next year.
It's a carryover to the next session.
So, so is there, is there a cost attached to it? In appropriations?
That's why it's, yeah, yeah.
Yes, exactly.
What would be the, so would, would they include in that cost and appropriations, what would the cost to maintain?
Whatever the move, move's cost of that, creating a new road.
Everything we have to pay for they would.
Because we, we were basically giving the land to them, right?
No, no, it's just an immediate agreement, and we would love to.
I thought that that's what the bill was.
No, 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 no.
The bill was to hand the, the road over to the.
I think it was.
I think it was.
I think it was.
I don't think so, I'm, if that were the case, I, I would, you know, I'd agree.
I think it was to have, I recall it to main, for them to maintain the road.
But there was no transfer of ownership.
Ownership, it was, we, this county would still be owner of the road, but the state of Maine, Bureau of Parks and Lands would be the, would maintain it.
What was the, you know what the elderly number was?
I don't remember.
Don't know, but it's, I think you're right, Bob, it's, you know, develop a prospectus on, on what we need to do, and, um, we'll schedule a meeting with Joe Patterson.
But I, I also think, Mr. Chair, that that hole is, is huge, it's a big hole, and it's, and it's in a hill, and you're coming down the hill, especially if you're heading towards Byron, and you run into that, yeah, it's, it's, we should at least do some signage. We should at least put up a big sign and say, huge humongous pothole, and you're gonna, you know, take your front end out if you're doing more than two and a half miles an hour.
Is that, is that something we could do some coal patch, Bob?
Can't we just throw some gravel in it for a while?
Just, just a coal patch, just to crush stone, something.
Uh, yeah, you can put whatever you'd like in there. Really, I mean, it's just a hole in the road right now that we're maintaining.
It's a huge hole.
And that's what we're gonna do, we're gonna maintain this hole, anything we do there, we're just gonna be maintaining a hole, unless we fix the road.
And the road, the road is close to winter maintenance, so in a few months, it'll take care of itself, it'll be.
There's a spring in there, actually, there's a spring in that road, that's the reason why they paved it. So, you're gonna, you're gonna be chasing this tail for a long time.
That road's, that's, that little hill, there's a hill called Number Six Hill, it's just before you get to the Oxford County line, and, and I'm seventy-six years old, it's been paved as long as I can remember. The only section of that road is eleven miles across there, the only section of that road is that hill.
Our little section, yeah.
Yeah.
So, if, is that where that hill ends, is it close to this hole?
The hole is in the middle of this paved hill, they paved the hill to prevent erosion, but like Amy said, there's a spring that bubbles up, so it's, over years, it's, there's a big chunk of, called asphalt, that's been, been up and gone.
The whole paved section's about a hundred yards long, and our hole, like, the whole damaged, the repaired section that needs to take place is about a hundred feet, it's like the middle third of that section, and it's a full third of that section. The hole itself is, maybe, if you mirror at this table, something like that?
And if you're cruising along at twenty-five to thirty miles an hour, which isn't, which you can do, all of a sudden, bang, it's like, it's like a bridge is missing.
Can we just, I mean, I don't know how much bud, how much budget you can get left, but if we could just dump some gravel, some crushed rock in that hole just to maintain it until?
I, I have the bill, you're right, it was maintained, but why it's hung up right now is there was, uh, two parts to it, right, ongoing funding to maintain the wells to Byron Road and Township Six, uh, twenty thousand dollars, that's an annual allocation, and then to bring it up to compliance was a hundred thousand dollars in twenty-five, twenty-six. So, that's what's hung it up.
A hundred and then twenty.
Uh, uh, and can you, um, expand on that, bring it up to compliance as in the normal pass?
I think it was ditching.
Yeah, one-time funding for repairs to bring the Byron Road to compliance with acceptable standards, I'll see if the.
Is that just our section?
Yeah.
Yes, just our section, that's it.
So, would it be wise for us to build in our unorganized territory budget next year, a hundred thousand dollars to bring that road up, so that when we go back to the legislature, it's only twenty thousand dollars?
I think it's their responsibility personally.
I, I, we've already put a boatload of money in that, and they just always seem to find, well, you shouldn't have done that, no, you take it over, you just.
And just, and also remember, this was their engineer's estimate.
Yes.
They went up, and, and the best way to kill things is to put a high price tag on it, so they estimate, because they don't want it, so they put a hundred thousand dollar initial cost to bring it up to standards, and then a twenty thousand dollar annual cost afterwards. So, I suspect that the money that we've put into that road over the last number of years is, is significant, and I'm not sure that it's a hundred thousand dollars worth of money, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So, what I hear you saying is you're asking Bob to come back to us with a, a plan and a price.
Mr. Chair, the, the bill just simply said road maintenance to Byron Road is, is, may still maintain the melt, well, the road to Byron and Township Six, since Parks and Rec will take it over, so didn't say anything about up to stuff.
Okay.
Just said they will maintain, so they put the fiscal note on it, and.
But, you know, if it comes back again, you know, like Amy said, seventy thousand people, um, climb Tumble Down, it's a, it's a, one of the premier hiking spots in State of Maine, and we're maintaining it for the State of Maine, so.
Maybe, maybe we ought to put a sign on it.
Toble.
No, no, put a sign on it, you're riding down the State of Maine road. Contact your local senator.
All right, um, getting more, Bob?
That's all I have for today.
Okay.
And again, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thanks, thanks, Bob. Do we have anything else on the miscellaneous?
I have a couple of things, just real quick, uh, one, um, I'm trying to understand the, how we use our cards, our cameras and time cards, I made a mistake last week, I was trying to rectify something and asked for when a person came in and out of the building. I just checked the policy manual, we don't have a policy on that yet, do we? I don't believe so.
No, we do not have a policy on that, we have one for the jail because the union required it, um, but when those, when the cameras got installed at the courthouse, and I think the understanding was here as well, that we wouldn't give, um, the, the footage to anyone. That it was going to be just, I, I don't have access to it, um, the IT director was the only one that's gonna have access to it, there were a lot of concerns about the capabilities of the cameras, uh, so, uh, it was, at that meeting, we all agreed that it was gonna be very limited access.
So, beyond the cameras, what about coming and entering it, like I requested when somebody came into the building, is that the same thing? Or, I, I guess what I'm just saying is the courts are pretty clear, at least what I can find, about what's allowed and what's not allowed, it just seems to me maybe we should document it in some way of what's allowed. I mean, I'm gonna do a little bit of my own investigation with the courts, and I'll, I'll give you that when I finish it, because I've just gotta understand it, and if there's a legal recourse, then I step on my own toes about misusing the data. So, I just, I'll bring it up, so just something I think we should think about, just to be clear, because as I said, the courts, I think you actually have it statute and in their own rulings about what you could use facial recognition on time.
We don't use facial recognition in, in the cameras at all.
I, I used that word, I meant more, you know, using the video cameras, so if, if somebody came in, I, I need to apologize, I just wanted to give you the heads up I was going through. Uh, the second thing I have, Bob, is we've been so hung up on the stipend, there are other recommendations the Budget Committee made, I'd like to understand how those are being addressed, uh, and how we plan to, like, for example, Blue Star, we'll cut ten thousand dollars, how have they been notified? It's an agenda item, I don't need an answer today, I don't think we have one, and then, um, based on the letter I've drafted up, or had drafted up, an organizational chart for what need to be replaced on there, I have it here, I'll hand it out later, but I think that should be on a future agenda, so that we can update that on our Google Drive. That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, Bill, Jeff?
Uh, earlier, uh, last week, I worked with the, uh, Amy and, uh, drafted up a letter for Mr. Guthrie, Porch Products, uh, to come and, uh, tell us about his company, uh, so, I'm gonna follow up with, just some email, and, uh, with that letter I sent, it was, you know, from me, but it was on the county, you know, stationery. So, as soon as I find out, um, hopefully, we could get Mr. Guthrie here to show us his product.
It'd be great.
So, that's the OSB plant in Jay, so hopefully, things are.
I'm sorry, I'll finish up, oh, I was gonna say, what about the guys that are buying the landfill?
I, I don't know about that, I had heard that.
You might wanna follow up with Shiloh, because that's significant, when I understand, my reading of it, and it could be completely long, is they're gonna operate that as a commercial landfill, because it's licensed and they can take so much waste in there, it would be good, I mean, I can do that if you'd like, or you can, because I know Shiloh and I worked on that landfill for twenty years together. It's just, where is that person, and what are their intentions, because I think this board should know about that.
Uh, while I follow up with Shiloh, and then I can just.
Yep.
Because I knew they had, I had heard they were, they had sold that, so, um, but those are, those are, and hope maybe I can get the, I gotta find out the owner, I've, I've talked to the owner of Jay Two, we had him at a chamber, so maybe we can get him here to, to explain, you know, he's a Mainer, uh, he wants to see that site succeed, and so, you know, as county, I think they wanna make sure we can do whatever he, you know, I know there's enough money there, but we can do a lot through advocacy for, for that, through different sources, so, uh, I'll keep you posted on that.
So, those are, Bob, you've been down past the site?
No.
So, I, I finally took a ride after, not, after the explosion, I had never gone back at one time, it's not there anymore, the mill's not there, it's. Just, just, you, you and of all people, I appreciate it, and you, I know, but it's just not there.
So, anything left of the machine floors is evaporated, but that whole new facility's gonna take care of all, all new sites, so it's a good thing.
Phoenix rises out of the ashes, right?
Yeah.
Yep. That's what they are, the phoenix, they, they used to be.
Okay, any more on miscellaneous? Need a motion to sign the warrants?
I will move that we sign the warrants.
Seconded by Jeff. All in favor? Um, we've gotta go into executive session, but I think we need to take a break.
Yeah, I do.
You wanna say one o'clock? It's, it'll give us twenty minutes.
Yep.
Could we cut that shorter? I, I do need to leave by, uh, one-twenty if that's possible.
And I have, I have an opening committee meeting scheduled for one, they, they know to go without me, because we have to.
All right, so can we do ten minutes?
So, I make a motion to go into executive session pursuant to, after a ten-minute break.
I'll second that.
Ben, Ben, Ben.
Ben, wait a minute, wait a minute.
I'm gonna make a motion that we go into executive session pursuant to what's in our agenda, uh, after a ten-minute break.
Second.
All in favor, thank you.